Ready? Great. Okay, call to order the Lynchburg Planning Commission meeting for Wednesday, November 11th, 2020. And our first order of business is the approval of the October 28th minutes. So hopefully, everybody's had a chance to take a look at those. Any changes or anything you want to note? Okay. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
No need to say anything?
Yep. All right. Okay, so the next thing we're going to look at, we have two public hearings, and I wanted to, before we get into them, address the rules of the meeting so that everybody's on the same page as we start. So what we'll be doing is hearing a presentation by the petitioner after the city has explained the case, and then they will have 10 minutes to speak. It'll be timed, and then when they're finished, individuals may come up and speak for three minutes. Now, if there's somebody who represents a group, that person can have 10 minutes to speak as a group. So as people come up and speak, they would be signing their names, stating their name, and then taking the three minutes. At a certain point, I might ask if other people want to continue to speak, or if everybody here feels like they have been well represented, and if there's people who are like, "Well, I'll decline to speak, but I want to note that I say the same thing," we would put that in the record. And then we would have a rebuttal, you know, have the petitioner, you know, weigh in on the issues that people have been worried about, and then we would close the public hearing. So that's how we'll proceed. And our first order of business is going to be a consideration of a petition by Hippo Seal, Inc., in care of Van Holton to rezone approximately 1 and 297 thousandths of an acre at 317 Cleveland Avenue from R1, which is low-density residential district, to B5C, general business district, with conditions to allow a contractor's establishment. So Tom, you doing that?
Sure. Members of Planning Commission, as stated, the petition does propose to rezone the property from low-density residential to B5C general business district, conditional to allow the use of the property for a contractor's establishment. The property is recommended for community commercial uses on the city's future land use map. The proposed business Hippo Seal is a waterproofing contractor with an emphasis on commercial caulking. The petitioner has indicated that two full-time administrative employees would be at the facility daily, with six to 10 other employees starting their day at the facility, and they do not intend any regular semi-truck traffic or retail sales of products at the site. The primary concern with this petition, the rezoning petition, is access to and from the property. While Cleveland Avenue is approximately 60 feet, has 60 feet of right-of-way, yet there's only 11 feet, and in some places, it's probably as small as nine feet in pavement width. And that's up to the intersection with Magnolia. Also, Boundary Avenue that, around the curve that goes out to Bedford Avenue is not a city right-of-way, and it is on railroad property. While the petitioner has voluntarily proffered to exclude numerous uses normally permitted within the B5 district, other numerous uses that could generate significant impacts remain as noted in your planning commission report. So again, the primary concern to staff is access to and from the site. The infrastructure is not in place to support it long-term, and so the Planning Division does recommend denial of the rezone.
Thank you, Tom. All right, who is here to speak on behalf and present this petition? Please come forward, state your name. You'll have 10 minutes to speak.
Sign in, please.
Sign in.
I'm going to read this. It'll take about two minutes of our 10, please. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, and interested citizens, thank you all for your attention today. I am Van Holton, and I represent Hippo Seal Incorporated, formerly Calk Seal Incorporated. We are commercial waterproofers with a concentration on weatherproof caulking and sealing. We have been conducting business out of Lynchburg for 30 years, and currently work from a leased office space at the Depot Building downtown, and warehouse space at Nelligan Insulation Company on Fairview Street. We do not own heavy equipment, nor will we ever, and we do not manufacture or fabricate products on-site. Field personnel gather at the warehouse to start their off-site workdays in early mornings, and we have several office personnel on-site during the week. We look forward to the opportunity of owning our own place and improving the former Lynchburg Restoration Facility. In order to do this effectively, we are asking the commission to consider allowing modern, conforming, status designation, and accept proffers that would limit extremes in the event the property is conveyed for any reason in the future. The real face and future of Hippo Seal Incorporated is our president, Mary Teal Holton, who's standing to my right. Mary Teal moved back to Lynchburg four years ago after selling high-end leather goods in the international market to work in her hometown. She now holds a Virginia Class A contractor's license, and since then has built a team at Hippo Seal Incorporated that is a major player in the large field of commercial construction. I understand the concerns of the neighborhood and the city in making a status use change. However, our plan is to improve the land and the facilities at 317 Cleveland Street by completing the cleanup started by the current estate administrators, make it a safe place, and institute a sustaining green space, setting a precedent and an example for the rest of the business and residential neighbors. I'm going to now introduce to you Ms. Amy Syke, Engineer and Principal at AccuPoint Surveying. Amy and her expertise will expound upon the details of our request and intentions. Again, thank you very much.
Thank you. As Van mentioned, I wanted to expand on their business operations. They do operate in normal business hours for our use, so no evening operations or overnight operations, similar, different from the bakery, which is an adjacent neighbor and a heavy use. Their primary use of this property is office and storage space, which fits a transitional piece from a neighborhood to a heavy industrial railroad and bakery. It is a much lower intensity use than the previous owner, Lynchburg Restoration. Their business has no dust or noise, which is a great improvement over what it was. This is a great example of infill and improvement to a severely dilapidated structure. They would like to improve the structure. If you've been able to visit the property, it is in need of some significant repairs. Other businesses have committed to this area. Recently Dollar General in the past few years has gone in, and a blighted store. Flowers Bakery has committed millions of dollars to remain in the area. The concern of traffic, based on their use, and even if Hippo Seal was to grow, the traffic counts of people coming to work once a day and leaving, or even leaving for lunch and coming back, would be around the equivalent of two to three residential homes. Cleveland Avenue between this property and Bedford Avenue, there are no homes that front Cleveland Avenue on this side. The workers would leave on Cleveland Avenue and then go out Magnolia to a safe distance. They would likely institute a one-way-in, one-way-out just for their own safety. If you've ever been out Boundary Avenue, which has a city street sign, city storm sewer, city sewer, city water, all kinds of city utilities within it, it's not a great view. So it would be strictly a one-way-in, one-way-out use of the property. They do not get, as Van mentioned, they do not get truck traffic. Their company vehicles are small residential-style vans, or regular cars and trucks that people would normally drive. Hippo Seal is dedicated to cleaning up this property, which has been started by the custodian of this estate, which, if you've seen, like I said, has come a long, long way so far. Hippo Seal is also willing to add additional proffers to make sure that things that might be of concern to the commission would be alleviated within their, within this request. And as, as the hearing moves forward, myself, or Van, or Mary Teal would be happy to answer any questions, be they technical or business operation-wise, that you might have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anybody here to speak in favor of this petition? All right, so is there anyone who represents a group? Who would like to come? Okay, so if you represent a group, you'd get 10 minutes, and then we'd see, like, which of the folks here, you know, you'd be representing, and you could just come forward, state your name, sign your name, and then you'd have the 10 minutes.
Well, let me ask you a question. So I don't need 10 minutes, I need maybe three or four, but there are people here who signed the petition, and four of them are not here. I joined the debate, and they have like three minutes. Do other people have to give a speech, or do I need to speak?
Sure, there will be time for other people to speak. You know, so there will also be time, we have received quite a few letters, so after everybody's had a chance to speak that wants to speak, we also will be reading eight letters, I believe. So we're going to, we're going to be in, listening to, I think, quite a few, you know, people who have very similar comments, so. And if you could please state your name as you begin, that'd be great, thanks.
So I'm Rob Vaughn. I'm Rob, can you hear me? I'm Rob Vaughn. So I live at 106 Woodland Avenue, so we're within the 215-foot, whatever the, whatever the line is that you have to notify people. And so, you know, I don't have, we submitted a petition, y'all have read it, but I wanted to just read the number, the people that signed the petition that basically are adjacent to the property. Everyone who is adjacent to the property signed the petition, with the exception of one resident, who I couldn't reach. So Morganae, Myron Bob Dandy, Eric and Kate Doll, Taylor and Ashley Glass, Melody Enfinger, boarder of the property right behind it, James and Marjorie Murphy, John and Jen Lawfer, Elizabeth Ken is here today, Christine and Michael Masters, Karen and Mark, Karen Warren and Mark Ordour, and then Sharon Franklin is here, her husband. John also boarder of the property, within 215 feet. Everyone signed the petition and said, "Please don't grant the B5C." And so I just want to say, first, our current experience within the neighborhood, we unfortunately don't have just a B5C problem, we have a Flowers Bakery problem, and we have a Elmwood Avenue development problem. And so Flowers Bakery had a great new expansion, they put a new bakery in there, and they installed some kind of a exhaust fan that, that makes this sound, that I'm going to try and reproduce, maybe if you guys can help me, so it goes, it kind of goes, "Hmmm." And if I just kept doing that for like all day, if I just kept doing that all day and all night, today, actually, if you went to the neighborhood, you wouldn't hear it because it's Wednesday, and they don't bake on Wednesday. But every other day and all night, it sounds like that. A bunch of neighbors got together, they called the plant manager, Alan Branscombe, and he installed some kind of oxidizer that made the noise get a little bit better. But it's still much louder than it was when Morganae bought the house, and I think it bothers us in the neighborhood. The burden is going to be on us to fix that, apparently. We call Alan, he's responsive, he's, he said today he's having someone come in from corporate, and he'll mention it to him. But we're going to, we're the ones who called them, we're going to be the ones who hire the lawyer, we're going to be the ones who call him and ask politely if he can fix this problem. But it's zoned I, and the nuisance, I'm unfamiliar with exactly how the nuisance regulations work when it's zoned I, but if you call the police and they come on your back deck and they listen to it, and they hear the "Hmm," this is back when it was really loud, they look at you and they say there's nothing you can do. So that's one experience. The second is the end of Elmwood that I'm sure you all have heard about. A bunch of new houses going in, the first thing they do is they clear the, the property, and they run tandem lumber trucks up Elmwood Avenue through what is essentially a one-lane road, over the blind hill at Woodland. And it sounds kind of like this. Right, and it just goes right past you. They're driving right in the middle of the road. You call the police, and they are unable to fix that problem immediately. We get in touch with the people who are developing the property, and we are interested to learn of this concept of "by right." So zoned R2, and it's zoned R4, and by right, the developer is completely within their rights to do what R2 and R4 allow. And part of it is cutting down the wood, and then building the, anywhere, they've told us, up to 326 homes in there. So what, again, you know, we're sort of learning in the neighborhood, is that it's actually illegal for you guys to intervene in that situation. It's not just that you can't listen to us or won't listen to us, it's that it's not right, you're not allowed. And the city council people are telling us the same thing. It's illegal in the code of Virginia for them to intervene in the situation, and to try and help us with what is clearly a nuisance, and not just now, but in the future, with traffic coming up Elmwood Avenue. So the thing that we're concerned about is not Hippo Seal, they're really lovely people, and Lynchburg is happy to have this, is lucky to have this business, but if it's rezoned B5C, you can still have things like a landscaping business, or a textile manufacturer, and the one I'm interested most is the blacksmith. I mean, I don't know, I've never seen a blacksmith operating in 2020, but I'm wondering whether it's going to have billows of smoke and sparks flying and all times of the day. And I'm making a joke, but honestly, it's not funny to us. We've got two situations that have happened in the last month or two that show us that what you guys decide here is make, is permanent, and it's almost impossible to turn back into downzone, it seems to us. And then what's more is that the burden isn't on Tom, or isn't on you guys, to cure this if there's a nuisance, the burden is on us. And we, and we see that, we've seen that twice now. And so that's why we're here, and that's why we're vocal, that's why everyone signed the petition, and that's why we ask you to deny the, the permit to, or the petition to rezonate. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn. Okay, is there anybody else who would like to come speak in opposition to this? If you please come forward, state your name, sign the paperwork there. And I would ask, you know, when, when we're talking about this, and I, I've spoken with Mr. Vaughn, and I understand the Elmwood situation is, is something that's really pressing in the community, but that we really make sure we focus on this petition, because this is why the petitioner is here, so.
Understood.
Thank you.
My name's Eric Doll, this is my wife Kate. We live at 309 Boston Avenue. It's across from the street that directly borders the property. I've got a little statement I've prepared. We live at 309 Boston Avenue in a bungalow-style house positioned at a dead end within the historic Woodland neighborhood of Lynchburg City. It is a peaceful, private, and quiet home. It's a peaceful, quiet, and private neighborhood. It's something we, we really want to fight for. The southeast corner of 317 Cleveland Avenue is approximately seven, 75 feet from our front doorknob. Our wonderful neighbor across the street, the east wall of her house, just two feet from the southeast corner of 317 Cleveland Avenue. It's very close to home. The core of our concern brings me to the definition of the B5 zoning district. I'm sure you all know what it is, but I'd like to still read it out loud. The B5 district is intended to provide for a variety of uses that require large sites, which often produce substantial nuisance effects. Wow, substantial nuisance effects. As the owner of a peaceful, private, and quiet home located 75 feet from the property boundary, we, you can understand why my wife, myself, and our neighbors are extremely concerned with the proposal to rezone 317 Cleveland Avenue to B5. Where is this high level of access mentioned in the ordinance? Is that the tight, more-than-90-degree turn off of Bedford Avenue to get to the property? Or is it the steep, dilapidated gravel road hill coming from Cleveland Avenue? How do we shield the adjacent residential districts from these substantial nuisance effects that B5 will permit? I see there are special restrictions for B5 districts that abut residential districts. How do we ensure those restrictions are honored? Does 50 feet really reduce that much noise and smell that would be defined as substance, substantial nuisance effects? I think not. I use the words "private, peaceful, and quiet" to describe our neighborhood. How are those three things going to be maintained if this property is allowed to assume the operation under the B5 standards? How is my property value going to be protected from diminishing due to nuisance effects permitted by B5 zoning? My wife and I are acquaintances of Mr. Holton, and he's a stand-up Lynchburg City resident and business owner. We have talked with him on the phone about his exciting business opportunity and his vision for rehabilitating the building at 317 Cleveland Avenue. We think his vision is great, it makes sense. My wife and I agree that Mr. Holton should be able to operate his current business at 317 Cleveland Avenue. We also agree that the previous owner of the business that was operating at 317 Cleveland Avenue, under R1 zoning, was operating their business illegally. We agree, the property at 317 Cleveland Avenue needs to be rezoned. The matter of discussion is whether Mr. Holton's business truly requires B5 zoning in order to operate. Why does B1 zoning not satisfy his business requirements? A small contractor's home base, serving the purpose for a few administrative offices and a spot to store tools and park work vehicles, why B5? Why a large site? Why permission to generate substantial nuisance effects? They say there's no current noise being created by Hippo Seal, so why are we going to permit them to create substantial nuisance effects?
Mr. Doll, thank you, your time, but your time's expired, so if you could wrap up, please.
B5 appears to be shooting for Mars when Hippo Seal really only needs to land on the moon. Our issue lies with the possibility that Mr. Holton could sell the property and/or business at a later date. What will happen with the property or business then? The options if zoned B5 are terrifying. Will we get a caulk manufacturing plant in our backyard? Will the new business decide they want to compete in the concrete business? I mean, I know there's other zonings for that, but irresponsibly over-zoning 317 Cleveland Avenue to B5 paves the way for what our neighborhood values most to be taken from us. Again, I want to reiterate, Mr. Holton is a stand-up gentleman, and I believe Mr. Holton's intentions to be pure. However, do not forget that he has two interests in this rezoning discussion. He is a business owner and a landowner. Are we rezoning this property to allow his business to operate legally, or are we rezoning this property to allow for maximum utilization of this property in the future? My understanding is that currently his business and his vision will not require a B5 zoning to operate legally, and therefore we ought not to rezone 317 Avenue to B5. Thank you for your time.
Okay, someone else like to speak in opposition? Okay, please come forward, sign your name, and state your name, and please note the lights there in front of you, in light of being able to get everybody in to speak.
Big dogs.
Big what?
Big dog.
I have this.
Throw it at me.
Thank you. My name is Dave Wickline. I live at 228 Cleveland Avenue. I think I'm the only one in the room that actually lives on Cleveland Avenue. I like some of the things that Hippo Seal proposed. My concerns are these. The traffic, number one. I don't think anyone, including the city officials, can separate the accumulative effects, small as they may sound, that Hippo Seal is going to have with the, somewhere between 160 and 180 residential developments at the bottom of Elmwood, and upwards of 1,700 vehicle trips per day coming out of there. They only have two access, three, excuse me, three access points to Rivermont Avenue, Boston, Elmwood, and Magnolia. Magnolia intersects with part of Cleveland that I live on, which is all residential. So I would encourage you to take those accumulative aspects into consideration. You cannot separate this from the other, as much as you'd like to on paper. We live there, we're going to have to live with it, and as Dr. Vaughn said, we're the, it's going to be incumbent on us if, if this happens, not on you all. The second concern I have is the B5C designation. I've lived on Cleveland off and on since 1963. For the last 30 years, we had several terrible problems with businesses on Bedford Avenue that back up to my side of Cleveland Avenue. One serious problem, the police couldn't do anything. Numerous calls, nothing we can do. City zoning people, nothing we can do. City council, nothing we can do. If it, if it was not for a Virginia state agency, we would be left with suffering the nuisance effects of one of these businesses. No one can tell the future. If you rezone this B5C, who knows what's going to come, come in there possibly? I know Hippo Seal has proffered a number of businesses, types of businesses, but they haven't proffered them all. And I would say that's another cumulative effect. We're the ones that are left with the burden years down the road with whoever comes in there after Hippo Seal. If Hippo Seal doesn't make it as a business there, or sells their business, we're the ones that are stuck with that. And one final thing, there are at least 12 young children on Cleveland Avenue, my part of Cleveland, under 10 years old. They're constantly running out in the street playing soccer, crossing the streets to each other's houses, going down to the 7-Eleven, et cetera, et cetera. We don't need any more cumulative traffic on that street. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next speaker?
My name is Sharon Franklin, and I'm a resident at 416 Elmwood Avenue, and would like to thank commissioners and all present for your time and the ability to speak here. I have one of the letters that I submitted, so I'll go ahead and read it for you, so you won't have to read it. A lot, it does reiterate many of the points, but as residents of Elmwood Avenue, my husband and I live within the 215 feet of the property of 317 Cleveland Avenue, and we urge you to deny the request to rezone that parcel from R1 residential district to 5BC general business district. And we concur with your findings and with your recommendations. And so that's, that really soothes us. The 317 Cleveland Avenue property is 1.297 acres, and it's tucked behind Dollar General Store, Flowers Bakery, and our residential Elmwood Avenue. The traffic survey denotes a denial on September 8th, 2020, due to Cleveland Avenue being about nine feet wide, and Boundary Road about 10 feet wide, and Boundary Road is located on the railway property and is not a public street. This parcel at 317 Cleveland Avenue is not able to handle the traffic of a zoned B5C property. And we understand that Hippo Seal and their owners have been very good business owners and very thoughtful, and would be good neighbors, but the consideration of B5C is what concerns us with the byright and with the classifications that could come in, seeing as how we have been dealing with that in the Elmwood neighborhood. And I really appreciate your time and for listening to us and having, giving us the opportunity to share this with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, would somebody else like to come up and speak? We do have, we have heard from Mr. Vaughan, who represented a large number of people, and we've heard a lot of very similar commentary, but there might be somebody else who wants to speak, and you're welcome to.
Hi, my name's Pam Shirey. I wrote a letter as well, and I won't read the whole thing because it is very similar to what a lot of the other neighbors have already brought up today. And again, I don't have any problem with the petitioners, what they're requesting, but as has been discussed, we have had a very painful lesson that if this gets rezoned, it opens the door for anybody who buys this property in the future to put in a different type of operation, which has been mentioned, is allowed to have a lot of nuisance effects. So I don't live within the zone of, the boundary zone, but I live further down Elmwood, excuse me. And so with flowers there, I can hear some of the noise, and I can smell bread baking, which is kind of a nice thing sometimes. But if the nuisance odors, if some other industry were to move in, we don't, we don't know what kind of nuisance odors we could get. We don't know what kind of chemical quantities they would be allowed to have. We don't know what kind of releases could possibly happen in our neighborhood. And in fact, I've contacted the local emergency planning commission to ask those types of questions, and they haven't returned my call. But those are concerns that would come up if this was rezoned to allow those types of operations. As far as the traffic goes, as the one gentleman mentioned, we're anticipating a trip, triple the amount of traffic that we currently have on our streets now. And we have, another lesson we have learned is that whoever buys the property is not responsible for any traffic problems. It is the taxpayer that would have to pay for any changes to any, anything on the streets. And we, as a neighborhood, feel a little incensed by that, since we're the ones that have to live with the problem, bring up problems that would be generated, and then we have to pay for the fixes. So again, we don't have any, I don't have anything against the petitioners. If they can do this operation in some other method, that would be great, it sounds like, but we, I really am opposed to rezoning. Thank you.
Is there somebody else who would want to come up and speak in opposition? Since it sounds like a lot of people, again, similar, similar arguments and discussions, you know, we do have some time that we will have rebuttal from the petitioner, so I think we'll move into that phase, and then after that, oh, we, I'm sorry, we have some letters. I think two of them might have already been addressed. Two of you all sent letters, correct?
Yeah, and I will agree with the petition mentioned by Mr. Vaughan, because you went over a lot of the information you included, and he did list everyone who had signed that.
And could you, do you have a number of people, the number of people on that list, the petition, for the record?
Twenty.
Thanks.
All right. This is from Nancy and Daniel Allen. Dear Planning Commission members, my husband and I live at 501 Maidwood Road in Lynchburg, Virginia. We do not reside within 200 feet of 317 Cleveland Avenue, but we are part of the neighborhood that includes Elmwood and Woodland Avenues and the streets issuing off of them. We are writing to urge the Planning Commission to deny the request for rezoning at 317 Cleveland Avenue to District B5C, and we agree with the points outlined by Dr. Rob Vaughan in his previously submitted letter on behalf of Boston Avenue, Cleveland Avenue, and Elmwood Avenue. Our neighborhood is already under siege from the development plan for the Oddfellows property and the enormous increases in traffic that will affect the safety of our streets here and the quality of our lives. As attempts to communicate with the developers in the city have already taught us, there appears to be no mechanism whatsoever for neighborhood input into the density of the planned development at the Oddfellows property or the dangerous increase in traffic that will result. And now comes a threat from the opposite end of Elmwood. This request to rezone what is currently R1 to allow for substantial nuisance effects from a commercial enterprise, not just Hippo Seal Incorporated, but whatever commercial enterprise might want to wedge itself into the Cleveland Avenue site in the future. According to Lynchburg City zoning ordinance, the B5 district is intended to provide for a variety of commercial and similar uses that require large sites and which often produce substantial nuisance effects. As Dr. Karen Warren pointed out in a previously submitted letter to the Planning Commission, the parcel at 317 Cleveland Avenue is not able to handle traffic of a zoned B5C property, and the traffic survey notes a denial due to Cleveland Avenue being only about nine feet wide. There are homes that overlook the Cleveland Avenue property that would be negatively, negatively affected by noise, odor, light pollution, and traffic from whatever commercial enterprise might be located there. Such commercial enterprise would be, would affect the ability of homeowners to dwell peacefully, but would also significantly reduce the value of their properties. Given that there are many other places in Lynchburg already zoned for such commercial enterprise, we ask that the Planning Commission leave in place the R1 designation. This letter is from Alice Austin. My husband and I are residents of the Woodland neighborhood near 317 Cleveland Avenue. We have lived on Elmwood Avenue for 12 years, and then because we loved the neighborhood, we moved only around the corner to Brunswick Road and built our dream home. This has always been considered an edge neighborhood where industry meets residential. We have lived with the noise from what was Flower Bakery for decades, the former food line with the delivery trucks beeping 24/7. We tolerate it because the neighborhood is a close-knit, functioning, stable, single-family-owned neighborhood full of good citizens. We look out for each other. We have policemen, doctors, nurses, teachers, veterinarians, security guards, and lots and lots of families, young kids. We pay our taxes, we invest in our homes, we have an active neighborhood watch, but we feel under siege from a development of 160-plus lot subdivision on one end of our neighborhood and now encroaching industry on the other. Let us continue to be a neighborhood, protect us please, by not granting a byright zoning change request for 317 Cleveland Avenue. This is from Bob and Mira Dandy. First, I want to thank you for continuing to lead in our community by serving on the Planning Commission. Myra and I live on Woodland Avenue, but our driveway is actually in the 300 block of Boston Avenue, just 100 yards or so from the property being considered for zoning changes that would ultimately allow a wide range of uses that would be damaging to the homes and families on Boston Avenue. Please consider carefully the request to change zoning, including the proffers, to ensure that the current or future owner are not allowed to dramatically change the character and livability of our neighborhood. This one is from Mike and Kristi Masters. My husband and I live at 414 Elmwood Avenue and have been here since 1994. We are within 200 feet of 317 Cleveland Avenue. We are writing to urge the Planning Commission to deny the request for rezoning to District B5C, and we agree with the points outlined by Dr. Rob Vaughan in his previously submitted letter. Our neighborhood is already being bombarded with the new development planned on the, at the old Oddfellows property at one end, and now this at the other end of Elmwood Avenue. The enormous increase in traffic will affect the safety of our streets and the quality of our lives. Our home is very close to the Cleveland Avenue property, and we feel that we would be negatively affected by noise, odor, light pollution, and more traffic if this property is rezoned to B5C. We are also very concerned our property value will decline if the property is rezoned. Our neighborhood has been through so much turmoil with the Oddfellow property and our inability to speak to the developers or the city to change anything with that development. We are hoping that you, the Planning Commission, will listen to us, the citizens of Lynchburg, and deny the request for rezoning at 317 Cleveland Avenue and leave in place the R1 This is from Karen Warren. We reside on Elmwood Avenue with 200 feet, within 200 feet of 317 Cleveland Avenue. We are both signatories of a letter sent to you on behalf of the Boston Avenue, Cleveland Avenue, and Elmwood Avenue neighborhood by Dr. Rob Vaughan. We agree wholeheartedly with the points he outlined. We strongly urge you to please deny the request for rezoning at 317 Cleveland Avenue to District B5C. Please leave it zoned as R1. The purpose of a B5 Business District per the zoning ordinance is intended to provide for a variety of commercial and similar uses that require large sites and which often produce substantial nuisance effects. 317 Cleveland Avenue parcel does not qualify for this zoning classification in any of these respects. The proposed business to occupy this parcel, Hippo Seal, Inc., serves a niche market with professional, commercial, and industrial caulking and waterproofing services. It does not manufacture the caulking product. They do not have retail sales of products and do not solicit public traffic. The B5C zoning request is inappropriate for this business's needs and for its location. If Hippo Seal Incorporated decides to sell its property, the new owners can by right use the land according to the zone classification. A B5C classification would allow for the nuisance effects of noise, odor, unwelcome lighting, and traffic. The traffic survey notes a denial in September due to Cleveland Avenue being only about nine feet wide and the Boundary Road about 10 feet wide. Boundary Road is located on railway property and is not a public street. This parcel at 317 Cleveland Avenue is not able to handle traffic of a zoned B5C property. There are appropriately zoned options elsewhere in the city for a business such as this one. Our neighborhood does not need to be placed further under siege, as we already are from the noise from the expanded Flowers Bakery, and as we will be from the burgeoning Blackwater Run development and its serious traffic impacts. These Planning Commission hearings are our last chance to have input on what goes on where we live and raise our families. Please stop this rezoning from becoming a risk to our neighborhood. And the last one is from Jennifer Wills. I am a resident of Woodland Avenue. I have been very distraught at the projected traffic from the former Oddfellows home, now referred to as Blackwater Run Development. The only roads into our neighborhood are Boston, Magnolia, and Elmwood. Rezoning 317 Cleveland will result in additional traffic on Magnolia at a time when 160 new homes are being proposed for our neighborhood. Add that traffic to the 1,700 new vehicles that will be traveling down Elmwood, and it will be even worse. I hope that you will consider the impact of this rezoning request on the entirety of our neighborhood, including the new development and ensuing traffic and safety issues, and deny the rezoning for 317 Cleveland.
Okay, I'd like to see if the petitioner would like to rebut these comments, have had any, any feedback on what you've heard, and then would offer Mr. Vaughan three minutes for, for the petitioner and, and the opposition to...
Thank you. I'd like for Nat Perro to say a few words, and then Amy as well, but I think we're on the same page with the neighborhood. I mean, I appreciate their concern. We're willing to proffer everything that's, that's an objection to the census: dust, light, noise, out of the zoning. Our goal is to, as I said earlier, to improve the property. It's in a state of disrepair now. It's only, if it's not arrested at this point, it's only to be, end up being a blight for the neighborhood. There's traffic in it. I run, we lease the space now, we close later in the month. I spend time down there, and I ask people to leave all the time. So basically, we feel the pain. It seems that a lot of it is exacerbated by things that are out of our control and not even related to our situation, which is understandable. But Nat has a good point about the, about 1915, the rezoning and the purchase by the railroad.
Okay, if you would please sign your name.
Good evening. I'm Nathaniel Perro. I serve as an agent for Hippo Seal in the purchase of this property. One of the main points that we wanted to make is the Rivermont subdivision was plotted prior to the Southern Railroad. So originally, these lots were, were supposed to abut on what's now is Hollands Mill. When the railroad came through, they bought under the name of Georgia Industrial Realty, provided land for the bakery and elsewhere. When, when the railroad came through, the Rivermont Realty Company actually sold this property to the Nallans for a coal depot. They knew when the railroad cut off from Hollands, it kind of isolated this area, and they knew it was an industrial character, and it remained an industrial character up until now. I'm not sure why the, the R1, the R1 zoning is in place, but it's a, it's a low-intensity use. The rezoning allows us to do a quality development, to, to clean up the property, to maintain the property, and to ensure that it's going to be maintained. Failure to have a company like Vans come into this property could result in a blighted property, a blighted area. We feel like this is an infill development. We're not doing any clearing of any woodlands. We just want to improve, improve this site, bring it to a great character, and be a great neighbor for the, for the Elmwood neighborhood.
One thing I really wanted to add was that the longevity of Hippo Seal is 30 years, and as you can see, they plan to transition to the next generation as Mary Teal is Vans' daughter. So they really are trying to place longevity. Happy to, to do whatever proffers are necessary. And, you know, residences and businesses have existed down Cleveland Avenue that is currently a city street, and if it's an insufficient city street, that was an issue before, we should have been addressing it globally. I'm not saying this is the only one in the city that's that way. So if it's a safety issue, there, there have been businesses down there for 40, 50, 60 years. So thank you for letting us present our case.
Thank you. And Mr. Vaughan, if you have anything else to say, since you were representing a group? You do get three minutes.
To say, so what, what things were pre-existed, the residential zoning is irrelevant. The fact that the road is insufficient at this point just means the city would have to fix it at the beginning. You're very confident that they would monitor the system out of the Woodland.
Thank you. Okay, at this point, the public hearing is closed.
We got one more.
Oh, I'm sorry. Would you like to say something?
Yes, should I come up there?
One thing I really wanted to add was that the longevity of Hippo Seal is 30 years, and as you can see, they plan to transition to the next generation as Mary Teal is Vans' daughter. So they really are trying to place longevity. Happy to, to do whatever proffers are necessary. And, you know, residences and businesses have existed down Cleveland Avenue that is currently a city street, and if it's an insufficient city street, that was an issue before, we should have been addressing it globally. I'm not saying this is the only one in the city that's that way. So if it's a safety issue, there, there have been businesses down there for 40, 50, 60 years. So, thank you for letting us present our case.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mr. Vaughn, if you have anything else to say, since you were representing a group? You do get three minutes.
I can just say, so what, what things were pre-existed, the residential zoning is irrelevant. The fact that the road is insufficient at this point just means the city would have to fix it at the beginning. You're very confident that they would run a thorough business system out of that neighborhood.
Thank you. Okay, at this point, the public hearing is closed.
We got more data.
Oh, I'm sorry. Would you like to say something?
Yes, should I come up there or just speak in here?
Well, you can just speak, you can just speak from there.
Okay. One of the things I've learned since I've lived on Cleveland, again, often on since 1963, is the people that typically want to put businesses in on that, with Hippo Seal, or anybody else, don't live where they have their business. And it's been a sore point for me and a lot of residents on Cleveland, I'm sure others in that larger neighborhood. It comes down to this, including landlords that don't live in the property, is you don't have to live there. You go on to your home somewhere else, but we have to live there. We have to bring up our children there. We have to sleep there. We have to worry there, et cetera, et cetera. Now, nobody can tell me that if you switch it to B5C, that Hippo Seal can guarantee from now on forever that they're not going to be serious nuisance problems down there. And the last thing I'd say is, I've been down to that property a couple of times. I understand the situation down there and the condition there. I don't see it as a blighted area. I see it as a quiet green space that's been neglected. So...
Okay, thank you. Okay, so the public hearing is closed now, and we're gonna, I'm sure have lots of questions for staff, for the petitioner, so...
Procedure, Mr. Chairman, and I don't want to, maybe I've misheard what was being said by Mr. Holton or one of the, maybe Mr. Paro or one of the representatives. Did I understand that you wanted to make some additional proffers on some of the, some of the restrictions?
Yes, based on the input that I've got, I certainly, I looked at the, the proffers we've given, plus the potential proffers that were remaining, and I knew that it'd be a problem. It all affected, we just want a zoning that'll allow us to improve the property and build modern facilities.
Well, you know, procedurally, and, and, again, I may be completely wrong on this. I know Mr. Martin can't be honest, but, you know, because I hear, just as a, as a, as an observer, I hear there's some, it sounds like to me there's some common ground that you all can, can meet in. It's a real compliment to, to, to the Holtons that, that the neighbors were complimentary of you. That does not happen all the time when people come in to object to petitions. So I heard that there was some common ground possible here, and it seems to me that if you can get your proffers more lined up with the concerns of the neighborhood, maybe you can have your cake and they can eat it too, type of thing. And procedurally, that can be tricky. You know, we don't want to rush the situation. We don't say, well, go out in the hallway and do your proffers and come back in in 10 minutes. I mean, that's probably not gonna get, get us to where we need to be to make a final decision on this. I'm thinking maybe if you could ask for a continuance until the, and I know you've got a closing coming up, and I assume you've got a contingency in your closing, but if, if you could ask for a continuance to the next meeting, that may give you time to get these, these objections that we've heard about today from, from Dr. Vaughn and some of the others, may get that worked out.
Can I speak there?
Yes, sir.
Um, you know, honestly, I don't represent, I'm not, I've not been delegated as the, elected as the representative from all people who's, and people who aren't here, people's life here. I don't think that anyone is eager to have this continue in the current format for another one. I think it should be the, the request denied, and then the, and I don't understand about their, what, re-request. I assume you at some point have got a problem together, come up with proffers that all, all this, but honestly, we haven't, haven't had this particular thing, and I think we merit it.
Well, procedurally, I'll call you back in a second. You know, procedurally, it sounds like...
Yeah, he could certainly offer some things. I, I think, I don't know if we other, we might have some questions. I'm, I'm kind of curious as to why the B5, if there's, if there's such a willingness to proffer so many things, why the B5? I think that was one of my questions, and, you know, before I heard, you know, before I would hear like how we're gonna do this, I want to figure out some of the ins and outs of...
As a contractor's establishment, and you need a B5 general business district to do that. And quite frankly, no matter what proffers they offer to you this evening, staff's opinion will not change based on the access to the site. Because once you rezone it from R1 to B5, unless there's some very specific proffers about number of employees and square footage and so on and so forth, and truck traffic, and so many things, there will be no way for staff to control that, and there will be no ramifications for, for the neighborhood. Until the access is worked out, staff does not support rezoning the property to any other district, period.
Tom, do you think?
Nothing.
Tom, what, what did you encourage the petitioner to consider that, that was written in here?
We've encouraged them to consider using the property as a non-conforming use, which they could continue on. It's been a contractor's establishment. Mr. Parr used it as such. My understanding is they do not wish to do that, because then if they want to demolish the building or add an addition on or expand, they won't be able to do so, which is, again, our concern with approving the rezoning without the necessary infrastructure in place to support a B5 district. Again, a B5 district is the most intense commercial district in the city, and I think the citizens very well pointed out the purpose of a B5 district, and this does not meet it. You know, we, we have, the city engineer talked to them about the traffic concerns since it went to TRC, and they have not been able to address it. One of the ways they could have addressed the city engineer's comments was to improve Cleveland Street up to its intersection with Magnolia. Obviously, that costs a lot of money to do so. They chose not to do it. So again, unless the traffic infrastructure is worked out, access, staff can't support it, and even then, there's other issues that you have to deal with, with, okay, how much traffic? How much should that neighborhood have to bear? They, they've expressed their concerns about, you know, the other uses in their area. So it's zoned R1, it's been zoned R1 at least since 78. So why is that zoning not right? Probably because infrastructure's not in place. That's why it's zoned R1.
So, Tom, do you expand on what you mean by continuing non-conforming status that they would be allowed to do?
State law allows for, the property's been there since 1800, right? That's what our assessors uses. I know it's most recently been used as a contractor's establishment by Mr. Parr, who passed away recently. If, if a use has been established legally, which I have no reason to believe that Mr. Parr's use wasn't the continuance of another non-conforming use, they could, they could do so. So one contractor's establishment goes out, another one comes in, as long as it's done within a, a two-year period, right? If it's, if it doesn't, then they lose the non-conforming use, and it can only be used as an R1 property. Again, my understanding is they don't want to do that because it ties them in into just what's there now. And I understand that from a business decision, yet the, the zoning is long-term. Once it's rezoned to B5, it's much easier to come in and ask for, oh, well, we want to amend this proffer, or we want to do this now. So my recommendation to you, again, is still denial. If you do want to consider additional proffers, my recommendation to you would be, do not act on them tonight, because staff would need to look at them in detail, which we don't have enough time to do so.
Is there any way they could be B1 with the CUP?
No.
And that's the, the traffic again?
Yes, well, we're, we're talking about the use. From, everything that they've submitted to us has been determined as a contractor's establishment.
Right.
Right? So, no. And again, we wouldn't even support, we wouldn't support rezoning to anything right now until the, the road access is worked out. It's, it's just not, it's not good planning. We would not be making good recommendations to you to do so.
So the only improvements on this property that could be made in its current zoning with the business would be to clean it up?
Clean it up.
You could pave?
They could clean it up and maintain the, the building as it is now.
And you could pave the parking area?
Uh, that's...
Put in the drive?
Is it gravel now, I believe?
Looks like, yeah.
Yeah, that, you getting into stormwater stuff?
Can you, Tom, can you comment on the, the future land use map? Just the fact that it is, it is a community commercial and, and that it's zoned R1?
Right. It is, it is, it is recommended for community commercial uses. That's probably because it backs up to the shopping center. Again, the future land use map is not parcel specific, it's kind of area specific. You know, community commercial allows for large shopping centers. You wouldn't put, you wouldn't even fathom putting in a large shopping center somewhere without having adequate infrastructure in place to get people to and from it, right? So even though it recommends community commercial, one, it's not parcel specific, it's area specific, which you do have the Dollar General, which used to be the food line, and two, you would not rezone the property to affect the future land use map until infrastructure was in place to handle it.
Okay, thank you.
Well, this is, to me, clearly an example, full being area specific. I mean, dude, it's so out of whack to the east of this property. It's some I-2 and, I-2 and B5, and full calls for traditional residential. I mean, there's, there's no coincidence there, right? Where you're from to east of, east of...
So this is 317 Cleveland. Across, this is the railroad and the Flowers Bakery. This is the Dollar General, correct? Here? So that's why that's zoned to B5. If you go to the future land use map, yeah, this area is recommended traditional net, residential.
The G toward the east is still going to be impeded. Actually, that's not something that we talk like every night, but this is one of those many areas that I think needs to be revisited. It's, character-wise, it's, it's completely out of whack. It's zoning. No, then B5 and I-2 zoning where there's traditional residential in the flow?
Well, you've got B5 here, which is a shopping center, and this is community commercial, which is a shopping center. Yet this area is, should be some type of employment designation because of Flowers Bakery. But right, there are places that the, the flume needs to be looked at and we're aware of.
And I agree, but that's not affecting us in here. This comes up a lot. We always try to make no areas to revisit.
Yeah, the only thing I can say on that though is, you know, in my mind, this is part of the neighborhood. And granted, it's the edge of the neighborhood. Granted, it's the corner of the neighborhood, but I, I think to change, to put that type of zoning in at the edge of the neighborhood goes right against one of the major situations in, in the comprehensive plan, which is the preservation of neighborhoods. And that's kind of where my stumbling point on the whole thing comes, regards to the flume. I think, and I think we're, you know, not to minimize anything you said, but I think we're dealing with what we got, you know, on, on site at this time.
No, I agree. The council has made it one of their priorities to preserve R1. They made that clear over the past years. This is R1, and R1 below the B5 is about as dramatic as you can change.
I agree.
I don't care what proffers they come up with. It's, it doesn't address the, the access issues, and it doesn't address the change in, in the characteristics.
I'm hesitant to, to make that jump, you know, having, having seen it and seen the neighborhood. And I live in the neighborhood, so I have the, the noise from flowers and the smell, which, which is good. You know, I, I think that, you know, I think there, there could be other opportunities for this land, and I certainly don't look at and say, well, the owner now has to make it a green space. But I do think things like that can be used creatively. And, and there are also, you know, the, the, that, that jump, that business thing, if we're looking at a infrastructure issue, that's not, that's kind of a, you know, something that we can't really even deal with. You know, we're not going to change that, and that's a very costly change. So I would tend to want to stay with the R1 designation.
I mean, as much as I would love to, I mean, have that parcel cleaned up and, and the improvements made that it so needs, I, I just feel like the, the issues of the, the access and the traffic and having that dramatic change in, in the zoning is just something that I can't, I can't avoid or ignore. So I, I have, I'm not, I'm not sure I can support your, your petition.
And I do love what you all want to do with it. And, and I, I do think, you know, I, I don't know your business, but being in business, you know, I, being able to use these spaces, non-conforming is an opportunity. I see some trailers and things like that that would get cleaned up, but I see some other structures, and, and I don't know if they would, they would suit the need, but, you know, I feel like that, that might be the, you know, one option to consider, if it was possible.
I'm not going to repeat what a lot of the other people have already said, but, you know, for the reasons that have been stated up to now, I couldn't support the change from R1 to a, to any one of the two classifications. Now, if there were different proffers that were being made that, that somehow addressed the issues that, that the residents have talked about and that we felt comfortable were not gonna, you know, lead to a de facto B1 or B5 situation, then, you know, there may be some, there may be some differences. But with what we've got before us today, I, I could, I couldn't support the petition.
Greg, not the only one that hadn't spoken, no. I first grew up on Elmwood Avenue, not too far from here, and so I, I'm very familiar with the development of this entire area. My first cheeseburger was right down the road there on Hollins Mill Road. The establishment was not there. The, the railroad was there for a long time. At the end of Elmwood Avenue was an airfield way back when. The city has grown. The, the, that area right there, Elmwood Avenue, Boston Avenue, that right there, we as children used to play there unsupervised. It was incredible. And I had just, my heart just leapt. As I drove up Boston Avenue, they had this little plastic safety patrol man in the street saying, hey, there are kids. And sure enough, there was two kids playing in the street, and it's like, wow. I haven't seen that forever. And it really made my heart sing with that. My only concern was I couldn't find a mom or a dad watching the kids, and here's some stranger driving down the road. The, and just getting off the subject, and I apologize. The, the, going from R1 to B5, even if you listed half those proffers there, you leave a lot of stuff out there that could come about. And I'm not saying that you would do it, but who's to say that in five years, you sell the property and someone else comes in there? It's a fair game. The other concern that Tom mentioned that is, that road has got to be fixed. I mean, it was a tight squeeze. I was forewarned about it, so I was prepared. I took my four-wheeling truck down there. Coming out on Boundary Street or into Bedford Avenue, that was scary. Because that's a blind turn. I mean, I had inch out, inch out, inch out, and next thing you know, I'm halfway across Bedford Avenue, and I still don't have a clean line to side down Bedford Avenue to the right. So I, I, unfortunately, I can't support it. It, it needs to stay R1 until someone can fix the road, and there, there'd have to be a lot of proffers for me to be satisfied that the overall intent of the development there is maintained. Because that is a resident... Because that is a residential area. It's part of our culture, it's part of our history of Lynchburg. And to go start putting more and more in there, you know, as a B5, is not the original intent, I feel. I remember when Piggly Wiggly was there, the car dealerships, and everything else. The original Pizza Hut. First 7-Eleven there. Um, so the city does grow, and if you look at the tax map, you can see how Lynchburg has grown westward, bit by bit by bit. But this was intended to be residential, not a business area. And it just, it, there's too much that needs to be done to bring it up to a B5 standard. But even as a B5, it would not fit the overall nature of the neighborhood. And so for that reason, I cannot support.
Does anybody want to make a motion? Is there?
I'll make the motion that the planning commission denies the petition that has been submitted and do it in conformity from the findings of facts based on the city staff's report.
Second?
Okay, is there any further discussion? Put it to a vote, then. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? No, so it'd be unanimous that we are recommending denial? And, and I really do hope, you know, I hope that there is a, a way out, like I hope that you'll, would be able to use that property, but, um, please be sure, you know, to state your case at city council, and all those opposed will be there as well. And, um, and good luck. Thank you for bringing this today. Okay, our next order of business is a public hearing on the consideration of a petition of Meanwhile Back on the Farm to rezone approximately 3 and 672 thousandths of an acre at 2627 Old Forest Road, 2624 and 2700 Confederate Avenue, from B3C Community Business District to B3C Community Business District to amend previously approved proffers by allowing a sewing and retail sales establishment and to enlarge the proposed event center from 3,000 square feet to 4,000 square feet. So who'll be presenting that today?
Members of Planning Commission. Meanwhile Back on the Farm is petitioning to rezone this property to revise a previously proffered concept plan. As the chair stated, the property is three tracts, with the main parcel being 2627 Old Forest Road and comprises 3.61 acres. The property is designated for medium-density residential land use on the future land use map. The city's comprehensive plan states that in addition to residential uses, these areas may include public and institutional uses compatible in scale with single-family residential homes. Private recreation uses, including country clubs, swim and racket clubs, and private open space are also appropriate. The property was previously rezoned in 2014 from R3, Medium Density Residential, to B3C in order for the existing manor house to be used as a restaurant and to allow the construction of a special event center and associated parking. Substantial compliance with that concept plan was proffered at the time. This petition proposes to, um, to revise that to show a slightly larger event space. Uh, the updated plan shows an event space of about 4,000 square feet, um, which is an increase from the 2014 plan where they showed a 3,000-square-foot, uh, event space. In the 2014 petition, this property was also designated as a local historic district known as Locust Thicket. So any exterior changes and any new facilities constructed on this property will have to go through review by the city's Historic Preservation Commission to ensure that the changes are appropriate. If the rezoning is approved, the existing manor house would be used as a retail store with space for sewing and the assembly of canvas and leather accessories such as bags and belts. A 4,000-square-foot special event space is also proposed, and the existing cabin on-site would be renovated for use, um, in the future as a gift shop. So in summary, the concept plan is very similar to the previous rezoning in 2014. The concept plan is only showing an increase of 1,000 square feet for that event space. It should not have a significant impact on this surrounding neighborhood. Additionally, the site's designation as a local historic district provides another layer of protection for the neighborhood since the HPC will be reviewing, um, to ensure that the district's character is maintained. Approval of the petition will also facilitate the reuse of a historic site. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And who's here to speak on behalf of this petition? If you could please come forward and sign, state your name, and you'll have 10 minutes to tell about what you're planning.
Thank you all. Uh, my name is Bobby Harris. I'm co-owner of Meanwhile Back on the Farm. As was described, we are canvas and leather bag makers, along with some other small accessories. Um, and we are currently existing business, um, on Old Forest Road and are looking to expand into a new, uh, space that, um, hopefully works out. We're very excited about it. Um, it's very in keeping with kind of our, what we're, what, what our story is and what we're all about. And, um, I think we can, um, do a lot for that piece of property. Um, it's, um, it needs some love. It's not in bad shape, but certainly due for some cleaning up. And, uh, what we do is very, I would say, low-impact, um, benign operation. If you, if anybody's ever been in our shop, um, it's, it's quiet and calm, and we're cutting and sewing and putting bags together and helping customers check out and helping them So, uh, this is not my strong suit, but Carolyn Howard's here as well with Draper Adden Associates. Uh, Carolyn, you have anything to add?
Yes, there are just a few things I'd like to point out that are a little different from the previous rezoning application and, and approval. One is, we are proposing to make the entrance off of Old Forest Road to two-way. Um, you know, there's not going to be a lot of traffic here. We feel that the Confederate Drive access could be emergency access only, and therefore protecting some of those, um, single-family homeowners there. And the, uh, the, also, the petitioner is looking at improving the landscape out there, um, not only to get it back to the historic nature, but also provide more visibility of that beautiful building that's there. So those are a few things I wanted to share with you right now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody here who wants to speak in favor of this petition? Great, if you could please come forward. I think by now everybody knows what to do.
Hello, I'm Vance Driscoll, and my brother Steve and I own the property to the left of this, uh, proposed, uh, change. And, uh, I sent a letter that you won't have to reread later, but, um, we own the properties at 2620, I mean, at 2613 and 2610 Confederate Avenue, joining the lot line to the left. Our biggest concern is, um, and I am in favor of the business and welcome them as a neighbor, but I've got three small concerns. It's not that I'm objecting to the business. So I hope I'm speaking at the right time. Um, the, our front doors and living rooms of the, of units that we have right next door face the property, and when the other rezoning was done, um, and the thicket that was there had been, was going to be thinned out and maintained, uh, we understood from them that they were going to put barriers there and buffers. Well, we've got within 50 feet headlights facing our living rooms and of our tenants. So that, that is our biggest concern. Um, and then they addressed the one concern, I think, about the entrance, making that two-way on the front a little safer, hopefully. That, that was another one. But then, then, um, you know, get, getting some type of privacy fence or vegetation in there, we would request that. And then there's an old hand-dug well within 50 feet of our property and Old Forest Road that we've always had some concerns about, safety-wise, that, uh, didn't have the right cover over top of it. We just ask that to be addressed by the new owners and developing it. Other than that, we welcome the changes. So, thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, anybody else want to speak in favor of this? Okay. How about any opposition? Anybody opposed to this petition? Great, if you could please come forward.
My name is Herman Garland, Jr. Uh, I live at 2636 Old Forest Road. I've been over there ever since, oh, 1985. And, uh, all my neighbors in the neighborhood right there, that, uh, we've learned to fellowship with one another. I've spoken to all of them, just bought all of them in my neighborhood right there, I know. And my concern is, if this business come in there, how it's going to affect what's there now. Traffic, you know, sometime right there, I've seen traffic back up from the, up at, uh, at the stoplight, past my house, back there to the duplexes. Uh, also, right there, my other concern right there is also, too, how they gonna do all this? How they's gonna do the construction? How they gonna, how they want this done? How they's gonna affect all the other people who are living in this area right now? Uh, it's peaceful neighborhood. Uh, we all get, like I said, we all get along one with another. Also, right there, the old house that was, uh, in front of me across the street, the historical house, I've never been a history bus, but since that house been there, and I've seen other companies come in and go out, I'm truly been interested in how things were built back then and how to preserve things. And I did, in a way, I like them for it to stay. So I'm just here, well, a little to say is that, uh, I'm not for it. I like the way things are now. Uh, I retired right there last year, and, uh, my neighbors right there on the left and on the right, they have said right there, if this was to come, they planning on putting some up so they can't be able to see what's in front of the house. So that's my concern right there, right now. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Can anybody else send opposition? So Mr. Garland had, uh, had a couple, a couple of things that he was concerned about, and, um, if you would, the petitioner would like to come up and, and comment on those. You know, he talked about the peacefulness of the neighborhood. You know, it is a beautiful place. I really appreciate that someone in a neighborhood would value, you know, value that structure and think that's important. I think that would be something that I'd like to hear rebuttal on.
Uh, yeah, that's a very good point about the historical nature of the building. Um, and it's one of the things that, uh, attracted us, um, to the, to the property. Um, and it is our utmost intent to preserve that building, um, and its facade. And, um, any, any future buildings which we've shown on the, the plan, um, would have to be approved by the, I think it's Historical Preservation, uh, and it would be certainly in keeping with the facade that, uh, is there currently. Another thing, um, we certainly want to be good neighbors, um, and the, the buffer there, um, any vegetation that needs to be there to create a proper buffer. Um, I know that the parking, the way it is aligned, certainly, when you pull in, some headlights could be pointing at some of those, uh, neighboring, uh, houses there, and, and, we, we certainly don't want to be a nuisance by any means, but I think we will, um, ultimately be, uh, an added value to the neighborhood. So, thank you.
Mr. Harris, you're a member of the New York City Council. Well, but I know where it is, and my understanding is, you, you are in the older house that you're in because you and your wife treasure that kind of thing.
Yes.
So you're already living those values, aren't you?
Absolutely, yes. Um, as long as, uh, and my mother-in-law's house as well, we lived up there, same deal, built in early 1800s, so, yes, sir. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, well, at this point, we'll close the public hearing, and if there's any questions to staff or to the petitioner? Because Dave will ask questions.
I guess I mean, uh, once you're here.
No question. Thank you. I mean, I, 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 in general, support this petition. I'm always a fan of, of redoing existing buildings, which we're seeing here. It's, it's still in various spaces. I ate there with this Grace restaurant years ago. Uh, it's, it's, uh, the idea that the petition is not that rapid, or we're not changing that much. And also, following the guidelines of the Historic Commission, I think, is really important, so that the character will be maintained. Um, I had not thought about the headlights. That is a big deal. If you're, if you're in a living room, headlights pulling up, I'm not sure the, the traffic pattern at night with this type of business, it's not a restaurant. Um, maybe that won't be a problem. But I, I don't know if that's enough of a, of a, of a stopping point that would require a formal buffer, but I think it's worth discussing. Uh, because if I lived next to it, if, if headlights were shining in my living room constantly, that would be, that would be a concern. But in general, I'm a fan of it.
Mr. Harris, as far as the, the operating hours, are, do you plan to be open much after 5 o'clock? Or is it, is it going to be a pretty much 9 to 5 kind of deal, or 10 to 5, or whatever?
Exactly. Uh, our current hours are 7 to 5. Um, we just increased run a little bit over time right now, but 7 to 3 has been our operating hours this entire year up until two weeks ago.
I, I too have been in this, this property over the years and on several occasions when it was restaurants, and then, of course, it was Jackson's Antiques years ago. So I feel like it's always been kind of a, a commercial-type, um, place, and, and it's been sitting vacant and, and, you know, falling apart for, you know, a little bit. So I'm, I'm thrilled to see, uh, somebody come in that I know will take care of it, that will make improvements to it, will, will keep the integrity of it. Um, and, and I heard your concerns, and I, I, I respect them, but I, I don't, I don't think that the Harrises will, I, I, I believe that they will be good neighbors, and I think that whatever they do to the property is just going to enhance it. Um, and I don't, I don't see a whole lot of increased activity that would, that would necessarily be a nuisance to, to the neighborhood. So I, I am in favor of the petition.
I'm a little confused about why you would be going before the Historic Preservation Commission. Is it, it's not a historic district, is it?
Uh, this actually was designated as a local historic district in 2014.
Okay.
Um, it's, it is, does seem like an odd place.
Um, it's, it is, does seem like an odd place, because, you know, where the other historic districts are in Rivermont downtown area.
So just that one property?
Just, just these, it's actually, these three tracts are, are design- designated as the Locust Thicket Historic District.
Okay, good. And have they proffered to put in veg- a vegetative buffer between parking lots and the houses, so that...
Um, so there's not a specific proffer for a vegetative buffer. At the site plan phase, we would require a 20-foot evergreen buffer. I know there's a good amount of vegetation out there now, so we might just be looking at something supplemental to the existing trees, just depending on what, how, how, how much is actually along the property line. But that would be something that we would handle at the site plan phase, and we would also make sure that there's not too much lighting trespass happening onto the residential properties. We would look at that at site plan as well.
Okay, so you will ensure that, that the neighbors don't have headlights? I mean, even if they close at 5 every day, there shouldn't be too much problem with headlights, so.
And if they expand and then do the event center, that would end up coming back to us, and then we would be addressing those issues, wouldn't we, with the...
This, this, this concept plan shows the event center, so that is what they're asking for now. The previous concept plan that is currently tied to the property is 3,000 square feet, so if they wanted to build that, they could, but the 4,000 square feet is pretty much why they are before you today, is to revise that part of the concept plan is, is the biggest piece.
Because that's the thing, then, would cause problems with headlights. You know, because there's an exit right there that goes straight through.
True. And I, you know, and I don't want to speak too much on their business operations, obviously the petitioner's, you know, much more knowledgeable about that than I, but my understanding is that the events that they host, most of the time, those are sort of, it's almost like a paint night, where you come in and sort of do a custom bag, that sort of thing. But you're correct, it, I mean, the restaurant operated there, and it wouldn't be any more impactful than that, I can't think.
Could you talk a little bit about that, events? Because that was a question I had, too.
You might want to come forward, you can come back, back up, so we can...
Really, what my, really what my questions are, or, because it was confusing the way it was written, it sounded like it was just gonna be a parking lot where you might use food trucks, you know, but I, I just wasn't sure how that was. If you just, a little bit about what your, what the concept is, and kind of how, how you might use that land, is really my question.
Certain, yeah, I, I can see, I mean, Event Space is maybe slightly misleading, the way we operate currently. To add to her point, you know, we, pre-COVID, would have, we, we would sell slots, so it would be two groups of, of people, typically women, on a Saturday, and they, you have a morning group and an afternoon group, and it's professionally catered inside the building, and they are allowed to come in and help choose and design, and actually help participate in the making of their bag.
But you actually build a buil- there would actually be an additional building for that, that you guys...
Right, so, the, the existing manor house and the, the potential future building would be utilized in the same fashion. They would, they would both be a, a mix of, you know, assembling our bags and retail, and tagging that as Event Space. We just kind of felt like it was needed to put that in there, so, yeah. Thank you.
That helps a lot.
Okay, yeah.
Without giving their, their company unsolicited endorsement.
Bags, and maybe the ladies on the commission are more aware of them than some of the men are, but they really are very creative and very attractive, and it's, I don't want to equate it with Moore &amp; Giles, because there's not an official affiliation, but it's sort of a, a, a company like Moore &amp; Giles. They do some really creative, cool things, and have a, I would say, at this point, you all have got a national, or maybe even an international, following.
Yes, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Well, I think, you know, because what I, just as long as you help people, just to make sure I haven't missed anything. I mean, listen, listen to your concerns, I hope you've heard the same thing I've heard, which is, you've got a, it sounds like you guys are gonna utilize the area because it's part of your brand, so there's not anything that you would change on purpose.
Correct.
Anything new that you build would at least look like it on the outside.
Exactly.
Um, because otherwise, it'd take away, and, and most of the stuff that you would do, there would be neighborhood-ish kind of things that would happen during the day, so hopefully wouldn't have a lot of the light pollution and the noise stuff that, you know, in inappropriate times of the day.
Correct.
Um, and, and like Ms. Johnson, I'm, I'm thrilled to see that area be used, because I do think it's a unique part of Lynchburg, and I, that, it's comforting to have somebody who cares about it get in there.
It's such a beautiful piece of property, it really is.
Yeah.
And I, you know, I know you're, you're looking to expand, but just driving, you know, up the expressway and looking into your parking lot, you know, three times a day, I, I've never seen more than eight cars, really, there.
Yeah.
I mean, and again, I know you're gonna expand, but...
Right.
Anyway.
Yeah, well, and we've been so lucky to be there, which is, the city has, you know, given us that opportunity there, and that, you know, I have to say, was very instrumental in helping us grow. But it's a great location, the building's not exactly gorgeous, but...
Right, well, it looks better now than...
Yeah, yeah, it was, we cleaned it up some, so.
I might, I might have missed this, but in the proposed new construction, is there, is there vegetative clearing, or is it gonna stay pretty, pretty similar in the way of the footprint of the vegetation? And I'm thinking more in between, for example, Mr. Garland's view shed, as I look from his house and look across, there's a substantial amount of trees between that building site.
Absolutely. It would be within, well within the, the buffer range all the way around the property. Maybe a couple handful of trees might have to come down, but, to put that building in place, but...
Because I noticed that the one parking lot, there were quite a few trees in it, because I found the one chain that was not up, so I could...
Yes.
Go pull in there, turn around there, and like, oh, that's interesting.
Yeah. Um... There's a lot of trees on that piece of property.
Yeah, and, and I noticed you did have the blue reflectors on the trees, so that was a nice help. And, but, I think it's a wonderful use of the property. As has been presented here, I do not view it as really gonna be impeding on the other residences around it, will not be detracting from the quality of life. And, so I, I'm willing to support it.
Well, for all in agreement, then that would move that we accept the motions proposed, we accept the complaint that's been proposed, this is read.
All second.
Okay, any other discussion? Any other questions? All right, well, let's put it to a vote, then, all in favor of this plan? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Say no. All right, that moves forward, good luck at council, and really excited to see that, and, and I believe, Mr. Garland, I, I believe they're gonna be great neighbors, and I think they're gonna keep that place looking really nice, maintain value of the houses around it, so, thank you for coming.
Thank you all, appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, so, last thing on our agenda is a work session on amendments to our telecommunications
So if the last hour and a half wasn't exciting enough, we're gonna talk about telecommunications facilities. With me this evening is Mr. Patrick Taze, who's an attorney with Grehan, Taze &amp; Pandect, Alexandria, right?
Sure.
Sure, same place, okay. But anyway, we've actually been working on this for almost a year, or more?
Little over a year.
Yeah. And, and this is really because of amendments to state and federal law, but what we're going to do today is, we're gonna talk with you about the reasons for the updates. We're gonna talk about the three different types of facilities, small cell, administrative review, eligible projects, standard process projects, we're gonna talk about the timelines for review that are set, we're gonna talk about where these facilities are permitted, the height of the facilities, and setbacks. So, the last overhaul of the city's telecommunications ordinance was in December of 1997, there were minor amendments done in January of 2000. There's been a lot of things that have changed in state and federal law since that time, really giving preferential treatment to telecommunications companies, and I think Pat will go over that in more detail later.
It's, it has been a long time since the, the city's ordinance has been reviewed and, and revised. I would note that what we're proposing to do, you have a current telecommunications ordinance, we're proposing to delete the entire ordinance and replace it with the ordinance that you all have before you now. Not to make piecemeal amendments or anything, the reason for that is that the, the statutory changes that have been adopted by the General Assembly and have been pursued at the federal level are so different from what we had before back in 1997, 2000, that it's, it's sort of like trying to fit a square peg into a round hole if we tried to use the, the current ordinance. The term, terminology, for example, that Tom mentioned, small cell facilities, administrative review eligible projects, and standard process projects, those terms don't exist in the current ordinance. So what you see here is, in the definitions, each of those terms is defined, I would note that the definitional section of the proposal is exactly the same as what is in the Virginia Code. We felt like, since the, the General Assembly adopted their statutes, and they defined all these terms this certain way, that we had to define them the same way, and so that's what we do. I would be remiss if I didn't tell you right up front that this, this area of the law, these provisions that we're relying on, the stat- the statutory changes by the General Assembly and the federal regulations, I would be remiss if I didn't tell you that these are all anti-local government amendments, all anti-local government laws. I sat down for a couple minutes, and I thought, well, how can I tell them, how can I explain that? And I came up with a list of like eight, eight, just eight off the top, and, and if you give me another 10, 15 minutes, I could probably come up with another eight, but I'll just mention these, and then we'll get into more of the details later on. These, the statutes have very rigid rules, they have provisions where if the city doesn't act on an application, or, first of all, if the city doesn't tell the applicant that the application is incomplete within a certain amount of time, it's deemed complete by law. Similarly, if the city doesn't act on an application within a certain amount of time, then that's deemed approved, and it's very rare that you see things like that. There are also limits on when conditional use permits can be required, there are fee limitations, there are procedural constraints on the city, limits when, when disapprovals are allowed. They have a, they have a term, we'll talk about this substantial change in, in the physical dimensions of a, of a, a structure, and they, they define substantial change, or it's not a substantial change, if you have a, a pole out there, and they get a, they get more than 10% of the height of the pole, they go up, or greater than 10 feet, whichever is greater. Or if you have an array of antennas, and you go up from the, from the bottom of the nick, new antenna, so you, you add an array at the top, if you go up from the bottom of the, of the new antenna to the top of the previous height, highest one, 20 feet. So, one of the things that Tom and I kind of joke about, but it's really true, is if you approve, for example, 150-foot tall pole, then you're really approving something like 175-foot tall pole, because they, they can get that by, by law, under these provisions. In addition, the city, if you ever deny anything, you have to give written reasons for the disapproval, very unusual. You don't, you know, y'all, y'all are on the planning commission, you know that when you act on an, on an application, you say up or down, you don't have to give all the reasons in the world, and you can, I can tell you from practicing law for 40 years, that basically, we'll, we'll find the facts, we'll find the arguments later on. Well, in this area of the law, you can't do that, and that's, that's a big disadvantage. For, for example, for small cell facilities that we'll talk about, there are only four reasons you can disapprove one of those, four. And, and they're very narrow reasons, too. And then finally, if time's running out and you need an extension on those rigid deadlines, you can't, you can't get a rigid, an extension of more than 30 days. Sometimes the city can act unilaterally, sometimes you have to get approval of the applicant. So, this is, this is something that is not favorable, but it's required, and that's why we're here. Now, looking at the, at the presentation here, we've got 29 pages. I want to emphasize that there are really two parts to it. One part is, the first part, pages 1 through 17, and then probably 19 through 23, that's the part that is really rigid requirements that have been imposed on the city. Tom and I have gone through the statutes, we've gone through the regulations, we tried to parse them out as, as well as we can, and that's, that's the first part. Second part, 20, pages 24 through 29, that's where you have a little, you and, and the city council will have a little more discretion in terms of what you want to, the, the districts you want to allow certain uses in, the setbacks, the, the heights, and that sort of thing.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but just, my understanding for the reading I did on this was, as long as you're on city land, your, your, our, our right of, of disapproval is pretty narrow, I mean, if at all.
Well, let me say this, and we'll, we'll get into this, but there's, the city has a small cell ordinance right now, and if you're on city land, city right-of-way or city land, then, then this ordinance does not apply to you.
Okay, all right, so I had it backwards, then, so it's city land, this ordinance doesn't apply.
Right, the, and, and, let me put it this way, it has to be a small cell, too. So, and small cell is gonna be the smallest of, of all the facilities that we're, that we're looking at here, but, yeah, we, we decided to look at the current ordinance, leave that in place, and have this apply to, to the rest of the, the city.
Okay. Yeah, so there's, there's actually a lot of nuances to this, and I think it's probably better to let, let us go through the presentation and go over what a small cell facility is, and what administrative review eligible project, and a standard process project. Again, I've been working on this a year, and it still confuses me at times, but not that, because he's got it down. So, Pat, do you want to kind of go over the amendments to the Virginia Code and the federal law?
Sure. So, if we could go to slide four there. So under the, under the statutes that we have now, they, they created these three specific facilities, and, and the statutes treat each facility differently, so the rules are different. Sometimes there's overlap, but sometimes it's, it's the same, or sometimes they're different, most of the time they're different. And the three types of facilities we're talking about are small cell facilities, and, and these are gradations of smaller to larger. So, small cell facilities are the smallest of, of all the facilities, and so, as a result, you'll see that the city, for example, can't require a conditional use permit, permit for a small cell facility, as long as they meet the definition. The same is true for an administrative review eligible project, that's larger than a small cell, can go up to 50 feet, we'll look at the definitions later, but the city is, is constrained from requiring conditional use permits for even administrative review eligible projects. And then, the rest of the facilities are standard process projects, and this is where the city can be involved with conditional use permits and, and can regulate them as a legislative matter. So, so what we have to do in, in looking at these, and, when you look at these provisions, the, the differences in the provisions are relating to the deadlines for completeness of the applications, different fee limitations they place on, on the city, you can't, you can't, for example, charge more than $100 per small cell facility, and, and, let's see, $100, well, we'll get into those details, but there are differences with the fees, there are different deadlines for each of the particular facilities, and different rules that apply to each of them. You know, bottom line is, as I mentioned, it's very one-sided. So, the small cell facilities on slide six, you can see that, that, this is pretty small, or at, at least they lead, they want you to believe that it's pretty small. I'll note for you a couple... I'll note for you a couple of things. First of all, the antenna, there's two parts here. The antenna has to be in an enclosure of no more than six cubic feet in volume, or an imaginary enclosure if there is no real enclosure. Please note that it says each antenna. So you could theoretically have more than one antenna, and more than that six cubic feet of volume with a small cell facility. But still, as these facilities go, they are on the small side. The second part of that is that the other equipment associated with it can't have a cumulative volume of more than 28 cubic feet. Well, when you flip to the next page, though, you'll see that 28 cubic feet doesn't include any of this stuff here on slide seven. So as a result, 28 cubic feet ends up being, in reality, much more than 28 cubic feet. Now, there is a fourth, and this really comes in the category of the small cell facility. A micro wireless facility is even smaller than a small cell facility. Obviously, since a micro wireless facility is smaller than a small cell facility, it would qualify for that. But under the law here, it has extra protection and is basically totally exempt from any regulation whatsoever. They don't need your approval, they don't need the city's approval for anything if they meet the micro wireless facility definition. You can see, it's very small, and it's probably a good provision, because cities, you know how localities tend to get, look at any change, when you have people come here to talk to you, they look at any change and say, well, that's a problem, I have to look at that or whatever. Well, in the general scheme of things, these shouldn't bother too many people. But they are exempt, and even if you wanted to regulate them, you couldn't.
So as Pat mentioned earlier, the city has an existing small cell facilities ordinance that's included in chapter 25, 28, point 1 through point 7. And this was adopted shortly after the state law came out with small cell facilities, but it specifically regulates small cell facilities located in the right-of-way and on city property. We actually went back and forth with our cells and with the city engineer and the city attorney about whether or not we should put the regulations for these facilities that are in the right-of-way in the zoning ordinance. Our ultimate decision was no, because the zoning typically does not regulate what's in the city right-of-way. So these new telecommunications provisions that are before you this evening for our work session, and will be before you next month for a public hearing, do not apply to small cell facilities in the right-of-way.
So the major thing about small cell facilities is first and foremost that by law, a conditional use permit cannot be required for these facilities. So as long as they meet the definition that I mentioned, the six cubic feet for each antenna, and the 28 cubic feet for related equipment, they're exempt from any, I'll call it legislative approval requirement, which is what a conditional use permit would be. Now, this is the first example of, they're deemed complete if the city acts late. The city only has 10 days, 10 calendar days to respond to an application. So they have to be on their toes. I've told Tom that when they get an application for any of these things, look at it right away. Do not put it aside and say, well, we'll get to that next week or whatever, because it really does make a difference. And if you, if they haven't met all of the application requirements, you need to tell them that. And you need to not only tell them that they haven't met them, but you have to explain to them what they haven't met. And then the onus is on the applicant to come back and fulfill the application requirements. There are fee limitations, and I started getting into that before. The limitation here is $100 for each small cell facility, and you can put more than one under these rules, you can put more than one under an application. But the city can't charge any more than $100 for each small cell facility, up to five. So if you have an application that requests five small cell facilities, then it's going to be a $500 fee cap for that situation. Now, if you have more, and you can have more, then it's no more than $50 for each additional small cell facility. So city's not making money off of these applications, believe me. The time constraint for approval or disapproval or whatever is very short, 60 days. That's all the city has. Now, there is a tolling provision that applies, and we've incorporated it in these provisions, where if they come in, they have an incomplete application, and we get to them and we tell them, you're incomplete, this is what you're missing, et cetera, et cetera, the clock stops. And when they finally come back in with a resubmitted application, and they meet the requirements, the clock resets in that situation to zero. And then we have 60 days from there. So it's not like if we, if Tom took nine or 10 days to get to them and tell them about the incompleteness, it's not like we've lost 10 days already or anything like that. We don't. It comes back. But in some of these other situations, though, it doesn't reset, it just restarts. And so you might have used, chewed up seven or eight days, so you don't have, you may have 52 days left or whatever. The biggest problem with all of this is, the second part of it is, if we fail to meet the deadline for action, then it's deemed approved. Deemed complete is one thing, deemed approved is a whole 'nother thing. So that's something that the city's going to have to keep an eye on, and that's one of the reasons why we put these provisions in the ordinance, so that there's one place that city staff can go to, and y'all can go to, and you'll know, everybody will know, well, this is what we have to do, this is the time limit we have to meet these requirements for. And one of the structural things that Tom and I decided in proposing the language that we decided to propose, is at first we were trying to lay out the rules and requirements and say, well, this applies to small cell and administrative review, et cetera. Finally, we decided, you know, this is going to drive people crazy. We figured the best way to do it, and then you're going to see some redundancy when you read these provisions, but it's intended to make it easier to understand for people, not only through the city, but the citizens and the respective bodies that have to deal with these applications. So ultimately, we decided to define small cell facilities, for example, then lay out the rules for small cells. Now we're going to move to administrative review eligible projects, do the same thing for that, and then when we go to the standard process projects, do the same thing for that. So that way, when you know how large the facility is, then you can determine, do we go A, B, or C? And then you can get into the details. With respect to the small cells, the city can unilaterally extend the period from 60 days to 90 days, but no more. Can't do it any more than 30 extra days. And you have to do it, you have to do it in writing.
What did you say was 10 days?
10 days is for the notice of incompleteness, and the reasons why the application is incomplete. So that's the first part, is it complete or not? And the second part is, have you met the deadline for action on the application? That's either approved or denied. Then as I mentioned, any disapproval has to be in writing, and has to state the reasons for the disapproval. And it's deemed approved if the city acts late. Now, the next page on 11 is, this is the one where, under the statute, there are only four reasons that you can give to disapprove one of these small cell facilities. Now, remember that we're dealing with a fairly small, the smallest of the small facilities, but by the same token, there's only four, and each of these four, you can see, are fairly narrow. First one deals with whatever the city may have in terms of its public safety, communications, and that sort of thing. Second one is kind of vague in terms of safety of the public or other critical public service needs. That's the way the General Assembly framed it. We're just copying their language. What that means in an individual situation, that's going to have to arise with your public safety people, to, you know, have them review it, get back to the planning office and tell them, well, we have a problem because. Aesthetic impact is one of the big issues with all of these types of facilities. I've been dealing with these for about 25 years. And, you know, it's amazing how the review process for these, and the design of these facilities have evolved. But you can see that their aesthetic impact is only on public land or publicly controlled property. Well, that's not too much. And plus, if we only apply, if we're applying the small cell facility ordinance, the one that already exists, to the city right-of-way and city property, that doesn't give us much help here in terms of the third item there for aesthetic impact. And then finally, even if you have a conflict with an historic district, you can only assert that as a ground for denial if that property is not one that qualifies for a federal review process. They have a certain process under the regulations, and if they meet certain requirements, the feds will look at it, and it's sort of like a preemption determination. They determine that if the feds are looking at it, then, okay, city, you can't deny it based on a historic, but if this particular situation does not qualify for that review process, then the city can deny it on that basis. These are the only four, though. You can think of any other reason why you may not like one of these facilities. And, you know, I'd have to tell you to stow it, because you can't use that basis as a denial.
Can you give an example of why the feds would be involved?
Pardon me?
Why the federal government would be involved? Can you give me an example?
Well, there's a particular regulation that provides that they review historic properties and impact on historic properties and everything. And I think it's through the Department of the Interior. I don't remember exactly what the review process is, but it's under the federal regulations that apply to these facilities.
It's called, I believe it's called a Section 106 review, and we get these for any telecommunications facility. So basically, what happens is, is that we'll get a letter giving us the ability to comment on this tower. And some of the comments will be, well, it's in our local historic district, and it's going to have this impact. But what this is really doing is taking the ability of the city to regulate these away from the HPC, because it's very few, if any, that I believe is not going to be subject to a 106 review.
I was answering a question of federally, federal historic versus local historic.
No.
It's their call.
No, again, these state and federal laws are very anti-local government, and that's because a lot of local governments have been historically denying telecommunications facilities, and the state and federal government have deemed that it's a necessary thing for us to have. Right? And local governments weren't playing nicely, so they took the ability for us not to play nicely away from us.
I agree with Tom's assessment. Historically, there's been somewhat of, you know, an inconsistent application of the laws in various localities, and some have taken such advantage of the legislative prerogatives that localities have, that it comes back to punish other localities that are well-meaning and may have been applying the rules appropriately. But this is where we are. It's reality.
Pat said it more eloquently.
So, on slide 12, so this is now the administrative review eligible project. And you can see, now we're moving from six cubic feet and 28 cubic feet of volume to 50 feet above ground level. So if there's a new structure that's not more than 50 feet tall, and meets these other requirements, it's administrative review. You can't request or require a conditional use permit. And from a zoning perspective, you know that that is very, very significant. The second part of it is the co-location on an existing structure that is not a small cell facility. So there we have something that is larger than a small cell facility, but, and it's being co-located, it's being attached to an existing structure. That's all that's being done. That's an administrative review eligible project. And no matter what the volume is, as long as the height is under 50, then they can come in and they can get that approved administratively. Doesn't have to be subject to public hearings and conditional use permits or anything like that.
And to be clear, they're still under that 10% higher.
Yes, yes. And we'll get into more detail about that in terms of what is a substantial change in the physical dimension.
So, again, we started off with small-scale facilities that are very small, well, 28 cubic feet. And now we're going up to, it could be a pole or even a tower that's 50 feet or less. So we're getting a little bit bigger. But according to the law, conditional use permits still cannot be required. These have to be an administrative approval process through city staff. Now, what does that mean? These facilities can go in any residential district, any business district, any industrial district, they can go anywhere in the city. And again, we have very limited reasons that we can deny them. So conditional use permits cannot be required. Very similar requirement that if the city doesn't act and tell you that the application is incomplete within 10 days, it will be complete. So when these applications come in, staff need to be looking at them. And thankfully, we have Eve, and she's very diligent about looking at things much quicker than I.
On this one, to show you the inconsistency of the law, on this one with administrative review eligible, now we're not just talking about 10 days, it's 10 business days. So it's a little more generous to the locality, to get back to them. Why they have that difference, I don't know. I mean, you read it, and it's clear that there is that difference when they use the word "business days."
And the fees cannot exceed $500, and they have to be reasonable. And they're talking about no value-based fees or third-party fees. Essentially, what this is saying is that the city cannot charge more than it actually costs us to process the application. So we couldn't go out and say, well, if we hired a third-party consultant to come in and review this application, they might charge us $55 an hour compared to us paying a staff person $40 an hour. The city can't charge $55 an application. It has to be based on our fees. Again, the city could extend by 30 days in writing the timeframe, but that's only with the applicant's agreement. And again, any disapproval for these applications have to be stated in writing.
Now, you can see on slide 14, the rigorous requirements that apply to, this goes to how long the city has to act on the application. So we've determined that the application is complete, and now the city staff has X amount, or the city staff or the, well, in this case, it is the city staff, we're not to the standard process project yet. But depends on the facility. And particularly note the second bullet there, with respect to 60 days to act on an application for modification, co-location, removal, or replacement, if it doesn't substantially change the physical dimensions of the structure. So that was the one I was mentioning before. They can go up 20 feet plus the actual height of the antenna array, or 10 feet, if you wanted to increase the height of the pole by 10 feet or 10%, whichever is greater. Those are not substantial changes, and by federal law, they're what are called eligible facilities requests. And when you have an eligible facilities request that does not substantially change the physical dimensions, that's their terminology, when you have one of those, then you are required to approve it and cannot deny it within 60 days. So, very, very rigorous. And then you have, if the change is going to make a substantial change, so we've gone over 10 feet... we've gone over 10 feet or over 10%, whichever is greater, or over that 20 foot from the top of the, of the old one to the bottom of the new one. If you do that, that is a substantial change, and in that situation, we get extra, an extra 30 days.
Wow.
Extra 30 days to deal with that. Um, and then if it's a, not a small cell facility, um, on a new structure, so something larger than a small cell facility, you're putting it on a new structure, you have 150 days. So city has time. But remember, this is following up on the, on the application requirements. So if it's incomplete, then it's deemed complete even if you have skimpy information. So Tom's first requirement is going to be to jump on that right away, or his, and have his staff jump on that right away and notify the applicant if, if the application requirements have not been met. And you'll see with respect to each of these types of facilities, we've laid out in, in particular, one after the other, any application requirement that, that applies. And we tried to, you know, in, with respect to that, that's something that the, the feds and the state didn't necessarily tell us, well, these are the only things you can require, but we tried to use our heads and, and, you know, for example, uh, with respect to small cell facilities, there are only four reasons why you can disapprove one of those. So the application requirements, a lot of times, applied to those. If you go back and, and take those four provisions that I mentioned, and then go to the application requirements, there, there's tie-in. So, um, this is, this again is for the, the, what we call the A reps, administrative review eligible projects. And there is less generous tolling provisions for the A reps also. And what I mean by that is, remember I was talking about how the, when you, when you give a notice of incompleteness, and then the applicant comes back in later on with the complete application, they resubmit the application? Well, in this situation, with respect to administrative review eligible projects, it doesn't reset at zero. That was the one where it, it restarts the clock. So if you used up 10 days to begin with, and then you only have 50 days, or you have 10 days less than, uh, the requirement, whether it's 150 or 90, et cetera.
So the, the state law and federal law also says that the city's not allowed to disre, disapprove these administrative review, uh, projects on the basis of certain things. Uh, and this is, this is kind of what's gotten the city in trouble in, in the past, and one, one of the first, I believe, when you first came in to start helping the city, was on a conditional use permit petition, uh, where we were going down a road that we shouldn't have been going down.
Langhorn Road?
Yep. I wasn't going to mention specifics, Pat, but okay. Uh, Langhorn Road, yeah. Um, we, we can't deny a, a application because of an applicant's decision, um, their, their design, their customer demand, or their quality of service. Uh, so if, if there's already a cellular company in an area, or, um, the, the people in that area come in and say, well, our cell phone service is perfectly fine with, uh, company A, we don't need company B in this area, that's not a reason to deny it. That is a business decision based on that telecommunications carrier, and it's not a reason that the city, um, can deny it. The same goes with a, their specific need for the project. If, if they think their coverage area will improve with this, or if they need it, uh, for certain reasons, uh, we can't, we can't dispute that. And also the wireless technology that, that's involved. If, if they're using an older technology that requires more towers, as long as they're meeting, uh, the requirements of this ordinance, we, we can't, uh, disapprove that. If the city...
So, so the, the 5G were, were some really negative things about it. This really kind of paves the way...
Absolutely.
To kind of push that technology out there much more quickly.
Mm-hmm. Right, absolutely. Um, and if, if the city does disapprove it, uh, again, we have to provide the, the reasons in writing. Uh, we have to state any modifications that the company could do to have the project approved. Uh, we can't unreasonably discriminate between provider A and provider B, uh, must treat everybody the same, and, uh, we must publicly release, uh, within 30-day any records, uh, in writing that supports our actions on that.
The towers like Verizon has a tower out there, they're already there, can Comcast co-locate on their tower? Do they make a deal with Verizon, or they have to build their own tower?
Typically now, the towers are not owned by the individual cell, cellular providers. Uh, there's companies like American Tower. Uh, they'll come in and they might be working with Verizon first, but then at different levels, they'll leave, uh, places for, for co-locations.
Ironically, uh, this is probably about two or three months ago, Tom sent out the, the draft ordinance to the, the, uh, the cellular community, the wireless communications community. And the, the one outfit that did provide responses to us was American Tower. And, and I would note that the responses, uh, that we received were pretty minor, pretty minor. I mean, there was nothing significant. There were the one, the one, there was one thing that, that we actually amended the ordinance, you know, the, the draft that we were working with at the time, to put the, put the change in that the, the attorney for American Tower wanted, uh, and we didn't feel, we thought, we felt like it was consistent with, um, what we were saying to begin with. And, and as a matter of fact, it's, uh, right at the top of 16, it dealt with the eligible facilities request, and this is the one that I mentioned earlier, where if you have the modification, co-location, or removal, or replacement, and you don't have a substantial change in the physical dimension, then they get it approved. May not deny and shall approve is the language they use there. Um, and, and I, you know, I've mentioned ad nauseam already about what does substantial change mean, so I'll leave that, I'll leave that for, uh, for you to read again. Um, now, I wouldn't note one thing, and, and going, going back to what Tom was mentioning about giving the, the reasons for, for a disapproval. I think with respect to bodies like planning commissions, city councils, boards of supervisors, a lot of times there's, there's reluctance to, um, to defer decisions on matters, um, because you want to get it over with. And, and, you know, everybody's here, let's, let's just take an action real quickly. Just as an advisory matter for y'all. And, uh, you know, I've, I've litigated a lot of these types of cases, both, both cellular communications and, and just plain zoning cases over the years. And, uh, the fact that you have to provide written reasons for your disapproval, I would caution you, you may not want to jump at, you know, just adopting an, an off-the-cuff motion. Now, now if you're going for approval, go for it, okay? Because they don't have those, it's only for a disapproval that you have to provide the reasons. Um, but if you have that disapproval, I think you can, you can help yourself, you can help the city's chances of prevailing if there ends up being a legal fight, uh, by, by, um, deferring decision, getting together with the city attorney, staff, discussing it, get it, get everything written out, uh, so you, so you can make it a much stronger case if you get to court. It's tough enough to win one of these cases to begin with. So you help yourself as a body and the city by being patient and cautious and, and taking that act. Now, of course, what that, what that also says is, you got to be within the time limit, because if deferring action on it puts you outside the time limit, and, and I know that the planning commission is not the approving body, you're making recommendations, but you got to take all of that into account, and Tom will certainly have to take that into account when, when he's scheduling the, the public hearings for the, uh, for the, and, and with respect to the planning commission, for the conditional use permits. Obviously, the administrative review and the small cells aren't even going to get to the planning commission. So just, just my two cents worth of advice on that particular issue.
But I know Tom well enough to know that by the time we get to that point on that, when he comes forth, he's going to have those, uh, those, those facts sketched out in his, in his recommendation for our consideration, so.
Well, and he mentioned the application before, and, uh, I, I, my recollection, this is several years ago, but my, my recollection is that there was a fairly long, um, resolution that was, was drafted by yours truly, uh, to, to lay out all of the reasons for the action and everything. And, you know, success in, in this area of the law means that, or is defined by the fact that there was no litigation, nobody, nobody decided to challenge it. Um, and, and obviously, if they, if they challenge it and you defeat them, that's fine, but it's even better when you, you have something that's all locked up and, and it's a strong decision. And, and, you know, you can have various gradations of strong. Um, so I would just give you that word of advice there. Um, now, on 17, you know, the second bullet there is aesthetics. Um, that's something that, this is how one-sided it is. They can deal with aesthetics and agree to aesthetic situations, but you can't necessarily impose it on them. So nothing, there's a provision that says, nothing prohibits an application from voluntarily submitting it. Well, what's, what's voluntary on their part automatically means that you can't unilaterally require them to do that. Uh, and to show you the, how insignificant the bones are that they throw to the localities, the, the general assembly, I believe it was this year, uh, said, well, you can, you can deny one of these applications, uh, if they haven't given written notice to all adjacent property owners. And, and that was the only amendment they had. This applies to the administrative review eligible and the, and the standard process projects. The, uh, interesting thing, if I could go back up to the first bullet, I kind of skipped over that. The interesting thing about the first bullet is that if you recall, the definition of administrative review eligible project, it's, it's up to 50 feet. And I haven't been able to figure out how they get the first bullet, when, if it's over 50 feet, then it's not an administrative review eligible project. So, um, I'm still scratching my head over that one, but that happens sometimes when you have these, these kinds of statutes. Um, and then you can see by the definition on the next page, 18, uh, very easy definition. It's anything other than administrative review, review eligible. Um, so this opens up the door, and Tom will get into this, this opens up the door for where now all of a sudden, we've, we've, uh, we can now require conditional use permits, and we have a little more freedom to make determinations about facilities.
Um, so standard process projects, conditional use permits can be required. So these are the types of projects that are, um, going to be coming before you, and, and we'll talk about, uh, later on, the height of, uh, these types of structures that would be before you, because certain heights over 50 feet are being proposed to be allowed by right, uh, as they currently are in certain districts. Again, there's fee limits, and they have to be reasonable. Uh, the application, again, is deemed complete if the city acts late. Uh, one interesting thing about these is that they can be disapproved on the basis of the availability of an existing wireless support structure within a reasonable distance. So if there's a tower that has room for a co-location and, and they, they, you know, choose not to locate on it, uh, they, it could be disapproved on that, although I think it's going to be very hard for us to do so.
So Shetland Falls in Scotty, it was a great case for that.
And again, any disapproval has to be in writing, and we, uh, have to state...
Tom, if I could, on, on the one about the availability of an existing wireless support structure within a reasonable distance, of course, there will be argument about what is a reasonable distance and that sort of thing. But juxtapose this situation, now we're dealing with, uh, standard process projects and CUPs, uh, with what Tom said earlier about the, the other types of small cells and the A reps, where you can't use the business decision against the, the applicant. You can't, uh, say, well, we disagree with your, your business decision to, to locate all, only on your own towers, for example. Uh, so this is directly, directly contrary to that, but the whole reason for it, I believe, is because now we've moved away from the administrative approvals, and now you're into a legislative approval.
Uh, the, the times are the, the same as it is for the administrative review eligible projects, 150 days for a new structure, uh, 60 days for modifications, 90 is for a co-location. Uh, and again, if we do not act timely, the applications are deemed approved. Um, again, the applicant can agree to a deadline, uh, but the city cannot automatically require it. Uh, I will say that through the city's technical review, uh, process, we act on applications much quicker, uh, than what the time requirements are given to us. Um, 21, is, is this me also?
Yep.
Yeah, a lot of this is, uh, the same as, uh, administrative review, uh, the same thing. We can't deny an application based on, um, their customer demand, their quality of service, the technology. Um, and again, we have to give it in writing if we're denying it, stating why, and what requirements could, they, they could, what they could do to, to make it, um, so that the city could approve it.
On, on 22, I've gone over this three or four times already. Basically, it's that same eligible facilities, uh, request, and, and we can't get into, uh, a situation where we're requiring conditional use permits for that. This is the, shall approve and may not deny, uh, as long as, again, as long as it doesn't substantially change the physical dimensions. That's the key. And I'll just, I'll just skip over 23, because we, you know, again, we talked about that. Uh, the same, the same, uh, bone that I mentioned before about, um, giving notice to the adjacent property owners and everything, you can use that as a ground for disapproval, uh, for, for these applications as well as the administrative review. And, and of course, all of these things are built into the ordinance. So, so if, if you get to the point where you're hearing a case and somebody comes up and says, well, I didn't get any notice about this, I mean, you can use that as a disapproval, and, and that'll restart the clock for them. They, that would require them to come back with a new application afterwards. But I suspect that the wireless company is going to make sure they meet that requirement. It's not, obviously, it's not very difficult.
All right, so what we've talked about up until this point is really kind of application requirements and, and the law. Uh, now let's talk about kind of specific, uh, where these are allowed, what districts, how tall can they be? Small cell facilities are permitted by right in all districts. Doesn't matter the zoning, doesn't matter where it is, they're, they're permitted by right. And there's only four reasons that Pat went over earlier that the city can deny those based on, and those were very limited things. Uh, administrative review eligible projects, these are projects 50 feet or less in height, are permitted in all districts by right. Doesn't matter if it's R1, R2, R3, or whatever, they're permitted by right up to 50 feet. This is really no different than our ordinance is now. Our ordinance right now allows, uh, these types of facilities up to 50 feet by right in the R1 district. The reason you've never heard of that, and we've never approved one, is they don't want a 50-foot tower, they want a 150-foot tower, which is why they come before you. Um, a wireless facility or structure in the B1 district, 100 feet or less is allowed by right. Uh, in the B3, B5, I1, I2, and I3, which is your heavier commercial districts and your industrial districts, 150 feet or less is permitted by right. Uh, any base stations of a lawfully existing wireless facility or structure, uh, meeting specified requirements, so size limitations, and co-locations of on-existing structures meeting the specified requirements are also permitted by right. So towers up to 50 feet in residential districts are permitted by right, up 100 feet in B1, and 150 feet in the B3, B5, and your industrial districts. Okay?
What about resource conservation? Would that be in a district?
Um, they would be allowed 50 feet. Yep. So let's talk about conditional use permits. Standard process projects between 50 and 150 feet in height in the RC through the R4, the I N 1, and the B4 districts. So if, if you want to go over 50 feet in a residential district, but up to 150 feet, you have to get a conditional use permit, and that would come before you in council. Uh, in the B1 district, anything over 100 feet, but no greater than 150 feet, 100, uh, a conditional use permit. use permit. And the heavy-
Tom, can I interrupt you for a second?
Yes, sir.
One of, one of the reasons, one of the rationales for putting the, the fee, the height cap in there for a couple of these districts is because in, in our experience, when, when you open something up and you don't put a height cap in there in the, in the ordinance itself, in the legislative adoption that is taking place, you know, somebody's going to come in and, and request something for, you know, for 300 feet or whatever, some ridiculous thing, and then you end up bargaining against yourself and everything. When you have it as a standard in the ordinance, they can't do that, they'd have to get the ordinance changed in the first place, which, which obviously is more difficult. So we just thought that from, from that perspective, with these particular districts, that was a good idea to do that. Now, this is, we're in the area of, you know, discretion of, of the locality and, and of the commission to make recommendations and everything. So if you have better ideas or disagree with any of these, we're certainly pleased to discuss them with you and, and, you know, incorporate better ideas in, in these provisions. But this is what we came up with by trying to put our heads together and come, come up with the best proposal.
Sure, and, and Pat brings up a good point. By law, anything over 50 feet, the city could require a conditional use permit for. That's kind of contrary to what our comprehensive plan talks about in needing to provide good telecommunications and, and internet service, right? These height limitations are pretty much, if not identical, to what's in our ordinance today, in terms of the height. Where you will see differences is in setbacks, the elimination of fall zones, those types of things. So anything in the, in the B3 and B5, which is your intense commercial districts, your IN2 district, which is Liberty University, and your industrial districts, anything over 150 feet would require a conditional use permit. So 150 feet is really that magic number, and that's really what the majority of our towers are at now. So let's, let's talk about setbacks, and, and this is very, very important. So, and we'll, we'll talk about this one a little bit more, but no setback for any wireless support structure or wireless facility 35 feet or less in height. Okay? Now think about that, 35 feet or less. Why did, why did we say that? Because state and federal law says you cannot treat telecommunications facilities any differently than you do similar structures. So what's similar to a telecommunications facility? Well, light poles are similar, flag poles are similar, church steeples could be similar, utility poles could be similar. So anything that's similar, you can't treat them any differently. So if we had said automatically, well, you have to have a one-for-one setback, then we would have to require a 35-foot setback for a light pole, or a flag pole, or a utility pole that's serving a, a business. So it was really tricky, but this was the best scenario that, that we came up with.
Let me, let me add one thing to what Tom was saying. What, what the statute provides is that with respect, if you want to apply a, what's called a setback, or what's called a fall zone, and, and we've taken fall zones out, we don't have any fall zone in here, why do we need one? We have setbacks. And, and so what, what the statute says is, if you want to apply a setback or a fall zone, it has to be, can't be any more onerous than, or it has to be the same as you apply for similar structures of a similar height. And so that really did require us to think about that a lot, like Tom said, what is a similar structure? And, and we're, and now he'll tell you how we came up with that 35-foot, and we think we're, we came up with a good idea here for good reasons.
Well, and, and 35 feet is the max height of a light pole in the city of Lynchburg. So that's where that magic number came from. So setbacks in your conservation district, and your residential districts, and your B4 district, the minimum setback is the height of the structure. Okay? So it's essentially from 35 feet to 50, it's going to be one-to-one. So a 50-foot tall structure would have to be set back 50 feet. In the B4 district, we, we thought that was a district that needed to be protected downtown, so the, the same goes. In the, in your business districts, in your industrial districts, if it's adjacent to a residential district, it has to be set back the height of the structure. And in the B1, B3, B5, IN2, and your industrial districts, if it's between 35 and 50 feet, the height is basically the minimum setback of the district that it's in. But if it's over that, it would have to be half the height of the structure. So we're really trying to incentivize the structures to locate in business and industrial districts instead of residential areas.
Coincident with, with this action, we are also, our staff is proposing changes to the ordinance, and you'll see those either at this time or whenever, but changes to the ordinance to make the, the equivalent requirements for the, the poles, the utility poles, the light poles, and that sort of thing. So that, at the same time this gets adopted, hopefully that will get adopted, and then we've complied with the law that way. And, and we're figuring, we're, our thought is that people who have, anybody who has a light pole or utility pole or whatever, they're not going to complain too much, because if it's 35 feet or less, which is more likely to be a light pole or utility pole than a wireless telecommunications pole, then they're not going to have any setback. And, and otherwise, and that's equivalent to the way it is right now, as I understand it, right, Tom?
Correct.
So we didn't want to, like, upset the apple cart so much that all of the utility pole, light pole people in the world would come out and say, we hate this provision, because now you're, you're, you're placing onerous requirements on us. So we're opening the door a bit there for the utility poles and light poles to, to stay the same as they, they've, they've been treated before, and opening the door a little bit for any, any 35-foot or lower wireless communications pole to be, to be established. But that would be something we would, we would like. We, we don't mind them at the lower level. Now whether or not they do that, we'll see.
So as, as Pat mentioned, we are proposing establishing setbacks for similar structures, such as the light poles, flag poles, and utility poles. And those requirements would, would essentially, not essentially, they would mirror the same requirements that telecommunications-
So with that in mind, the only downside would be, I'm just thinking about the last situation we had, is that conceivably, you could end up with a bunch of cable towers that are just trying to cover the distance. Remember, approved as you made last time?
Oh, if you approve it.
It was like in six miles or something, and they figured around the edge, so your density might go up, because you might have some small, so that'd be your only downside, based on what y'all put in place.
In terms of setbacks?
Yeah, I mean, it's in terms of controlling, it's what you're trying to do, is control where the, where the light, yeah, where the cable towers go, correct?
Well, the majority of these are monopoles that I've seen. I haven't seen any guide towers for a long time unless they're really tall, and you see some of those out in the counties. You know, I, I really struggled with this, and Pat will tell you, over this, over this time period, he's like, Tom, you really need to deal with this, and how are you going to deal with it? And I was like, I really didn't want to, and then he forced me. So, you know, it's either we have setbacks for flag poles and light poles and utility poles, or, and, and not for telecommunications.
See, I think it makes perfect sense, I'm just trying to figure out, because the problem I have with this is, it, what you've already talked about, is that you've got, for lack of a better phrase, aesthetic concerns about putting this stuff up in neighborhoods and whatever. And right up next to that is, everybody wants better cell service, everybody wants better internet, so, you know, and, and it's becoming more and more of an issue, just like, I mean, people expect to have internet, just like they expect to have a cell stuff, just like they expect to have telephone. So I'm trying to figure out what's the best way to walk what's, what's an increasingly fine line, given the fact that, the thing, the insight I have when we did this last time, Tom, if I'm correct, was the cell towers, to me, needed to be a heck of a lot closer than I thought that they needed to be, to, to be effective.
Well, a lot of that's based on terrain and-
Which, of course, is always going to be an issue in Lynchburg.
Right.
So I'm trying, so I think what you guys have done, from my standpoint, is the whole setback situation deals with that situation about as good as it can be. You're trying to drive it to places where it makes sense and where it will be less aesthetically impactful, if that's a word. But the only downside is, we could just end up with more short, more shorter tow, or more shorter pole.
You could, and, and some localities would rather have that, I mean-
But that's the only downside, I mean, you pretty much ruled everything else out.
The wooden poles on Fifth Street-
Yeah.
Are 50 feet tall.
Okay.
All right. So would you rather have more 50-foot poles like that, or would you rather have 150-foot?
Yeah, I mean, 100% with you, I'm just-
Well, I, I'll tell you, what the state and federal law says, is you'd rather have more 50-foot, more 50-foot ones, because-
I'm just trying to think down the road, because we, you know, because you've got, you know, you're, you're going to end up, it's now 20 years down the road, and the only downside is, you're going to have more 50-foot poles.
Well, I wondered if the market, you know, a lot of this seems, you know, kind of like eminent domain-ish and market-driven, and we look at this 5G issue.
True.
And, and as time goes by, I think that is the way, I think these new technologies might not need-
Huge towers.
Or might, actually might need the shorter, and, you know, shorter poles and shorter distances to have the same kind of quality.
Well, I, I believe that's the, the whole reason behind the small scale, the small cell was to roll out 5G.
Right. So we can still do our CUPs like normal for the old-school poles, but as time goes by, we're not going to have old-school poles, and we're going to be used to it, like we are with fire plugs.
Right.
People didn't like those at one time, you know?
One thing I would mention to y'all is, if you take a look at the first part, we, we glossed over this, because they're not mandatory requirements or anything, but the first part of the ordinance, the very first couple pages, is the purpose and intent provision, and it hits exactly the point that, that you were bringing up about, you have a balance between providing cellular, cellular communications to your citizens, and at the same time, providing protection to, you know, from aesthetically unpleasant, unpleasant views. So it's a balance, and you can see that some of those, some of those purpose and intent provisions apply to one side, some the other side, and we're trying to meet that balance here.
Party pooper, I didn't know we were going to go on quite this long. I've got a family call I've got to be involved in at 7:00, so, but you've done a nice job, Pat, thank you for, for forcing Tom on some things that we didn't, we didn't even know he had to be forced on. I don't mean to be a party pooper, but as I said, I've got a family call.
Thank you.
Well, again, that was a very brief overview of the ordinance. We wanted to bring this before you in a work session to see if you had any major concerns with it. Honestly, you know, the three-quarters of the presentation that we went over, you know, even if you had a concern, it's got to stay that way because of the law. If, if you want to discuss the heights or the setbacks, if, if you don't think that's adequate, you know, we, we could propose changes to that. But we wrote it as close to our existing ordinance in terms of heights, but also trying, while, and, and maintaining protections for all of our districts while meeting the intent of the law.
And Tom, we're not quite finished, though, you skipped over page 27.
No, you skipped over-
Well, I didn't, I didn't really. If I could just go, if we could go back to 27 for a minute, because that really is sort of the end. So with respect to the standard process projects that we can require conditional use permits for, so this is what we came up with for the issues that y'all would be considering when you get one of those conditional use permits. And, and I, one thing that I would, I would highlight for y'all, because you are the planning commission, is the, the comprehensive plan has a special place in this area of the law, I think, because when you adopt a comprehensive plan, you, you say, this is how we're going to deal with our community down the road. It's not like a decision that's made only because an application was filed. You're laying out a marker for this is the community that you want to see happen years to come. And so, so that is, from a defense attorney's point of view, defending these types of cases, that's very important, because you're not reacting to an initial application, you're stating ahead of, ahead of time, before any application exists, how you want your community to be developed. You don't want to be too harsh, because if you're too harsh, they're going to ignore you. But at the same time, you may want to take a look at your comprehensive plan, see how you deal with, you know, poles and high, high structures and telecommunications facilities and that sort of thing. A little different from laying it out in the ordinance, obviously, but it's important nonetheless. And so we've hit all these other provisions, I won't go into each of them. Some of them, you can see that, you know, we, we used, we used the, remember the four reasons why we can deny a small cell facility? Well, we stuck those in here, because obviously, if they're saying that's okay to deny a small cell facility, it must, must be okay to deny a conditional use permit on that basis. So anyway, I just commend that to you, and if you can think of any others, we're all ears.
So if I wanted to put up a tower, I would try to put up a 35-foot tower on a tall hill. And, and we've got plenty of those around here, and I could get away with most any place, right?
Especially in an R1.
Yeah, in an R1. And then that one several years ago, that was on Julian Adams' property, that none of the neighbors wanted, was probably on a hill, and he might have, you know, gotten away with it then.
I think I noticed that we don't have that when I go down Rivermont Avenue, because I have no cell signal on Rivermont at all. So, well, thank you, Tom, that was interesting, and thank you for-
My pleasure.
My pleasure.
So we're here on a work session, but we're going to come back with it next month, Tom, for public hearing.
Yeah, so I was, that's one thing I wanted to ask, is so do you anticipate anybody being in here? Obviously stakeholders would be, you know, the cell companies or tower companies, but this seems very favorable to them, so I don't think they're going to, what other, who else is going to say anything? Are we just going to let the public hear it, is that the, the goal?
You know, obviously, these towers can be hot-button issues, like it was on Langone Road.
So it could be a, it could be a-
Could be, you might have some, you might have people come in and say, no, you ought to do a conditional use permit for anything over 50 feet anywhere. And you can most definitely do that, if you choose to. We, we're not sure that's the best approach, that's not the approach we've taken in the past, but you could do that based on, you know, any citizen comment that you, or you're, you may hear, oh, you should require larger setbacks for these things. Okay, fine, but if you do that, you have to require the same setbacks for similar structures, which I don't think you want to do.
And then, of course, the other sort, to paraphrase, if you make it too difficult, the state's already said, listen, we're only going to listen to so much of this stuff before we're going to force it through. And they may not do it based on our, based on our decision, but it's, it's probably common. I mean, if, if it gets to be that, because I think it's something they've said's going to be a priority regardless, and if, you know, if you can't manage it, we're going to tell you how to do it better.
I would note that in addition to all the things that we've, we've talked about today, there are a bunch of other provisions in the ordinance that are, that are similar to provisions that were in the ordinance, current ordinance. For example, stealth design is something that's required if you're in a CUP situation. It's, it's recommended, but not required if you're in a small cell or an administrative review facility. Another one is abandonment. People often ask, well, what happens if the cell company abandons its facility, isn't using it anymore? We don't want to have to look at that pole and everything. Well, the, the city already had provisions with respect to abandonment, we refined them a bit, but because those provisions were already in the ordinance, we didn't put this in the outline, but I just want to mention those, and any, and a bunch of other ones in there. But you can see them, and, and we'd be glad to take any questions y'all have, you know, at the public hearing on that also.
Great. Thanks.
I think there are important points, not just looking at the changes, but identifying those goals and initiatives. I think that, I think that strengthened the presentation a lot.
I'm sorry-
I'm saying, not just looking at the change-
I'm saying, not just looking at the changes, but pulling out those important bullets.
Right, right.
From, from what hasn't changed in terms of a public presentation, I think would go a long way towards providing a comprehensive overview of the, the final product.
And of course, you'll have a staff report by that time where, where that'll be laid out, yeah.
And maybe mentioning the whole setback, the equity in setbacks, starting with something like that, because people will have to think twice about that.
And I think the presentations, obviously, gives the things that people are going to, you know, object to the most. So I think that was a good layout of, a good presentation for those issues. And, and I commend you guys for going through the other stuff because I didn't realize the presentation and then I went into the deep part of the small print, best sleep I've had this week. But outside of that, that's all, that's the only good news I have. Y'all are, congratulations.
Thank you very much. I hope it wasn't too boring.
I thought I did something wrong. I think we're going to get back. Can I move for a term?
Sure, yeah.
A second.
All right. Everybody, see you later.
Thank you. Thank you all very much.